5G is coming for a super connected world. The car industry is one of the first verticals to take advantage of cutting-edge 5G solution for improving road safety. Huawei is spending significant efforts to bring 5G into the car industry. In June 2017, China Mobile, Saicke Motor and Huawei have jointly conducted the first field trial in China for teleoperated driving. The tests took place in Shanghai. Powered by 5G, ultra-high bandwidth and ultra-low latency, a person sitting miles away from the car can remotely and easily drive the car as precisely as he would be in the driving seat. With 50 megas per second uplink throughput, the multi-HD video data coming from the car can be transmitted to the driver immediately, while the control signals from the remote driver can also be transmitted back to the car under 10 milliseconds. The driver seems sitting in the car to drive it like people do today. Applications for teleoperated driving could be applied to dangerous environments like mining and construction fields. There are other scenarios where teleoperated can play a major role, such as car rental and car sharing projects. In June 2017, Huawei has also conducted platooning trial in Germany and in China. With 5G ultra-low latency, the control signals can be transmitted from the pilot car to the following cars within five milliseconds. It allows the platooning fleet to manage all events, such as the close tracking, the lane change, and the emergency brake easily, thanks to the precise synchronization among all vehicles forming the platooning fleet. Such a scenario will improve the road safety, save labor costs, and lower the fuel consumption by shortening the distance between platooning vehicles. Recently, in Beijing and Shanghai field trials, Huawei has completed a series of 5G new radio tests. The downlink peak throughput has reached over 6 gigabytes per second for a single user. The cell peak rate has exceeded 18 gigabytes per second. Moreover, these field trials have demonstrated that the 5G NR air interface latency is well below 0.5 milliseconds, and the total cell capacity can support over 4 million single-cell connections. Let's move forward to a more connected and intelligent world enabled by 5G.
Our special session on mobile systems and telecommunications. My name is Vera Drazdova, and I will be the moderator of that session. And I hope it will be very useful. It will be, we will have many interesting sessions which we will be able to discuss together. Here we can see many, many people from universities and from the leading vendors, from industry, from Huawei, and I hope it will be very useful for all of us. And let's get started. We will start our session with the presentation of Skolko Institute of Science and Technology from Moscow, Alexey Frolov. And the subject of the presentation will be machine learning methods in 5G, 6G wireless networks. It will be in this studio. We will see the record.
Hello, dear colleagues. So my name is Alexey Frolov, and I am from Skolko Institute of Science and Technology. I am associate professor in this institute. So it's my pleasure to participate in this conference. And first of all, thanks to the organizers for inviting me to this event. Okay, let me proceed. So the title of my talk is machine learning methods in 5G, 6G wireless networks. And yes, I'm a specialist in coding theory and error correction coding, so I will mostly focus on machine learning methods to decode error correcting codes. But at the same time, I would like to mention that there are another approaches. So for example, you can use machine learning in order to improve digital signal processing algorithm or signal detection. And also, so machine learning is usually applied in order to do scheduling. So for scheduling for this protocol part, so also machine learning can be applied, but today we will focus on error correcting coding. So let me recall what scenarios are used in 5G. So here, here I just showed, I think you saw this picture a lot of times, so three main scenarios of 5G wireless network. So the first one is enhanced mobile broadband or EMBB. So it is scenario where you send huge streams of information, so for example large video files, so augmented virtual reality, video in 4K, 5K, and so on. So this scenario is user oriented. At the same time, the main, the main difference of 5G in comparison to 4G is in two different scenarios which are used in order to connect devices to the network. The first scenario is massive IoT, or massive machine type communications. And this is usually how to allow a lot of connections in the network. So usually, you, we may speak about parking sensors and other sensors. And the main task in this scenario is to preserve or provide connectivity rather than think about spectral efficiency like it was in EMBB scenario. So here we do not care about spectral efficiency at all, and we just think about connectivity. So we want a lot of sensors to be connected to single base station. So this is the main problem. And another scenario is also device oriented and, okay, it is called ultra-reliable low-latency communication, so ULLC. And so the, okay, the most important, or maybe the most known example is connected cars. For example, so you know that they should exchange information, and the latency and delay are of critical importance for this scenario because otherwise there will be problems on the road, and it will be dangerous. So that is why, so we need to somehow provide ultra-reliable communications and with very low latencies. So this is another scenario, so we see that scenarios are different, but at the same time we mentioned that, okay, from the point of view of error correcting coding, so there were two codes which were adopted to 5G. So first is multi-age chapter like LDPC codes, and there was a lot of work, so I participated in this standardization work, that is why I know a lot about these codes. And second, polar codes. So LDPC codes were adopted for, to use in data channels, so EMBB data channel, and polar codes were used, were adopted to use in control channel of EMBB. So it's for control channel. So, okay, we know that LDPC codes were invented in 1960s by Robert Gallagher, and, okay, these codes are known for a very long time already, and so they were, they were, okay, analyzed in early, okay, starting from the year 2000 and up to now, so they are well investigated. Polar codes were invented in 2009, and by Adal Arican. And, okay, this class of codes is very efficient, so this is the first class of codes for which it is proved that these codes achieve capacity of binary memoryless channels. So the first class of codes with such proof, but, okay, at the same time, there are some problems with these codes, and so the main problem is very big latency because the decode of these codes is successive. So we decode bit sequentially, so bit by bit. That is why so the latency is huge, and, okay, for now, there is a problem to adopt these codes or to use these codes in data channel because of big latency. That is why so, for, they are used for short length messages for control channel, and for these channels they are extremely good. Okay, let us move forward. Okay, why polar codes should be, okay, sorry. Okay, 5G LDPC codes. Let me recall the definition, the main definition of LDPC code, because so these two codes are the main topic of my talk, so we will try to improve the decoding algorithm of these codes by means of machine learning. And it is very natural so to use machine learning algorithms because they can fit better some particular matrices, they can be trained in order to better fit particular code which is chosen. So this is very natural choice, but before, let me recall the main definition. So LDPC code, and this is the year when they were invented, so LDPC code is a null space of sparse parity check matrix. What do we mean by sparse? We mean that the fraction of ones on all zero elements in this matrix is small. Okay, if we consider asymptotic case, this fraction should go to zero, but, okay, if we consider non-asymptotic case, we can say that, for example, 10, okay, if this fraction or density of ones is 10 to the power, for example, minus 2, then, okay, it is sparse. If not, okay, it is, it is dense. Okay, so we see that, we see this sparse parity check matrix, the code rate can be estimated. Okay, here I show an example for regular LDPC code, it means that the number of ones in rows and in columns is the same, so k is the number of ones in rows, j is the number of ones in columns, and rate can be estimated as follows. And the rate is, as usual, so it is ratio of useful information to the length of the code word. I would recall that error correcting coding means that we add some redundancy. So we have information message, we add some redundancy, and with this redundancy we can deal with noise. That is why, okay, we speak about the rate, and the rate definite is usually less or equal to 1, because the length, the total length includes information message and some redundancy. Okay, LDPC codes, the definition of LDPC codes was given, so in my opinion, so the most interesting definition will be given here because polar codes are rather young, they were found interconnection of these codes to well-known read-maloc codes, and actually polar codes is generalization of read-maloc codes. But, okay, the main idea is information theoretic, and this is the main, main thing about these codes. Okay, assume that we have two copies of the same channel, double. For example, this can be time instance or frequency channels, but, okay, they are the same. And we want to transmit information. So the straightforward way is to transmit information in these channels independently. In this case, we do not deal, we do not somehow affect the probability of error. But, okay, Arican suggested to do some linear transform here. So from two information bits, we obtain two transform bits, x1 and x2, with the following rule: x1 is the sum of u1 and u2 modulo 2, and x2 is just equal to u2. Okay, nothing different. So, okay, and then we transmit this x1 and x2 via two channels. But at the same time, if we consider mutual information, and we see, so first of all, this is straightforward because we use invertible transforms, so this mutual information is preserved, and then we use the chain rule to split it, we obtain two mutual informations here. And, okay, these two mutual information, so let me show it on the picture. So in the first case, we transmit u1 and obtain y1 and y2. In the second case, we transmit u2, and we know y1, y2, and u1. Okay, we obtained two, two channels which are different for now, from two equal channels, we obtained two different channels which are here. And, okay, one channel is better, and one channel is worse than initial channel. That is why these codes are called polar codes, and this, this process is called polarization process, because from two equal channels we obtain two different channel. One is worse than initial channel, and one is better. And so the transmission is simple, continues this process up to infinity, so continue to polarize the channels, and then choose, then it is proved that some channels become useless, so it means that mutual information is equal to zero, and some channels become completely noiseless. It means that mutual information is equal to 1. And, okay, we can transmit for free in noiseless channels without any coding, but at the same time, we cannot transmit in, in useless channels because of mutual information is equal to zero, and it's, there is no sense to transmit. That is why people decided to transmit zeros in these channels. We just know that we transmit, always transmit zero in this channel. That is why so this process is called, these bits are called frozen bits. Frozen bits correspond to useless sub-channels. Okay, this was small introduction, and let us go, let us move forward to the main topic of the talk. And the main topic of the talk is to somehow, the main goal is to suggest an application of deep learning to channel decoding in order to improve either performance or reduce complexity latency. So it's very natural motivation, can machine learning help us? Okay, and some reasoning why it should help. So, okay, first reasoning is the reasoning to use machine learning in wireless networks. You know that wireless networks become very difficult, and it is difficult to use algorithms, general algorithms for them. That is why so we assume that machine learning algorithm can better fit the situation, they are trained, and they can better correspond to the scenarios. At the same time, if we speak about decoding, we can say that, okay, machine learning can help us to deal with particular parity check matrix. So we have some general algorithm, belief propagation of polar codes, it's successive constellation, but, okay, they are general, they work for all matrices, they work for all codes. But, okay, our goal is to somehow better train the algorithm for a particular parity check matrix which is used in 5G. Okay, that is why we assume to obtain some performance key. Okay, the topic is not so new actually, so machine learning for now it's well-known, right? But, okay, there were some attempts to use neural networks to decode codes in, in the literature. And so the main problem here is as follows, so we cannot use straight, we cannot use general neural network because of curse of dimensionality. You should understand that if you use a code of length 100, even if you use a code of length 100 bits and the rate 0.5, it means that there are 2 to the power of 50 different code words, right? And so it is too much to train neural net, to fully train, fully connected neural network, because we need to show all the code words to this neural network, and this is a big problem. And at the same time, you know that in 5G, the length can be 8,000, and the rate can be high, it can be, for example, 0.9, and this is actually a problem. So we cannot train fully connected neural networks, that is why we need to find some special architecture. At the same time, let me recall that decoding problem is actually a clustering problem. So we need, not not clustering, sorry, classification problem. So we need to assign, so we obtain channel output, right? And we need to assign it to some of the code words. We have a lot of classes, and we need, we need to solve classification problem. That is why so decoding is actually a machine learning or statistics problem, so we need to do classification. But, okay, the main difference from classical classification problem is in a huge number of classes. So we have 2 to the power of 50, for example, or even more classes, and so this is too much to use some general methods. Okay, in order to show, in order to prove my saying, so let me show an example. So, okay, this is example which I show all the time. So this is a code of length 16, the number of information bits is 8, and the code distance, which is not so important here for the talk, is equal to 4. Okay, it means that the rate is one half, because the rate is the ratio of number of information bits to the code lengths, right? Rate is equal to one half, so this is a generator matrix of this code. And so let's try to train fully connected, so we have, okay, here we have only 256 code words, and, okay, we can train neural network and see what will be. Okay, this paper gives us, so actually this procedure, so what was done, so this is the architecture of the neural network. And so the main idea is to train this neural network. So in order to train, we generate a training set. And the main advantage of using machine learning for decoding is that we can generate training set by ourselves, and so there is no problem to collect data set, right? Usually, machine learning is a problem, so we need to label some data sets and work a lot, but here we can generate it on the fly. We should use just encoder, and then modulator, and adding of the noise. And we have noisy code words, and then we can train the neural network, fully connected neural network. Here it was very simple, so there was three layers, okay, I have the description in what follows. A very simple neural network, and the output here is just bits, decoded bits. Okay, so let us try to train it, let us see what will be. Okay, okay, sorry, it was on the previous slide. Okay, so here are the simulation results. I would like to recall that we used, I think, three layers, and one of them was of size 64, the second of size 128, or maybe vice versa, so 128, 64, and the last 32. So it was very simple neural network, but, okay, let's see what will be. So if the training set contains, includes all the code words, it is shown here 100% code words. Then, okay, we see that the result of the decoding, the result of the training shows, okay, it was validation of the neural network which was trained. We see that the performance corresponds to the maximum likelihood, and this is the best performance we can have. Okay, but we see that, okay, if you show 75%, 50%, and 25% of the code words, then we have degradation, significant degradation up to here, and this means that neural network cannot generalize. So it cannot, from several code words, neural network cannot reconstruct the code, neural network does not obtain knowledge about the code itself. And this is strange because the code is linear, and the basis is sufficient to just define the code. And so we see that the straightforward approach is not possible here unfortunately, and so we need to do something cleverer. Okay, what to do? In our opinion, the only way, so in our opinion is important word here, so in our opinion, the only way to deal with this problem is to combine a deep learning methods with existing decoding methods. Okay, if we look at the literature, and today is, you should consider it as a overview of existing approaches, so I listed them here. So first approach is called Tener based approach, and this approach was suggested by these guys, and we applied it for 5G LDPC codes. I will explain the differences. So here, the authors applied it for BCH codes, for different codes, but we applied it for 5G LDPC codes. Okay, the natural generalization of this approach was suggested by these authors at NeuralIPs, which is the best, or maybe one of the best conferences in machine learning. And this approach is called hyper network approach. And another approach was suggested as ISIT, or International Symposium on Information Theory, and this is called syndrome based approach. It is completely, these two approaches are practically the same, and they are based on belief propagation decoding method. And this approach is based on syndrome decoding, and I will explain it. The main advantage of the last approach is that we can use general neural networks. Here we need special neural networks, and here we can use general neural networks, and it won't be a problem. Okay, let's move forward, and I explain the approaches, I explain the approaches. Okay, so first of all, Tener based approach. Okay, this Tener based approach is based on the graph, which is called Tener graph in the literature, which is usually used for LDPC codes decoding. So let me recall what is the Tener graph. Okay, assume we have such a parity check matrix, then we can enumerate rows and put them as one of the parts of this graph. So this graph is bipotent. Here we have rows, so here we have four rows, and these are rows 1, 2, 3, 4. Okay, let us enumerate columns and put them here. So these nodes will be called variable nodes, and these nodes will be called parity check nodes. Okay, and, okay, so this is one-to-one mapping, and each one here is actually an edge here. So we put an edge if there is one on the intersection of this row and this column. Okay, the color corresponds to the edges, so this is a Tener graph. So this representation can be done for any linear code, but it is, okay, the most successful application of this representation is for LDPC codes. So this is called Tener graph. And, okay, usually LDPC codes use some product or min some decoder. So these two decoders can be called belief propagation or message passing decoder. These are two general names. In particular, we can use some product or min sum. And, okay, the main thing here is that we work with log likelihood ratios. Log likelihood ratios defined as follows. So this is the received, received symbol, and here we have two hypotheses, two likelihoods. The probability or density that r is received when 0 was transmitted, and opposite hypothesis that, okay, we transmitted 1. Okay, and in some product we have such, and min sum we have such check node update, so we see that this is just simplification, so because this hyperbolic tangents can be replaced with this minimums, with some degradation definitely, but, okay, this is much, much more simple, and it can be used in practice. And variable node update is the same, and it is shown here. So these are two decoding algorithms which work with Tener graph, and in what follows we will update these algorithms. Okay, and what will we do? Okay, sorry. Seems to be I have some problem with slides, but, okay, so, okay, the main idea here is to construct sparse neural networks from the, network from the Tener graph. So what is the main idea? So, okay, we have a Tener graph here, and in these neural networks, each edge or each message which will correspond to the node in this neural network. So, okay, for example, this blue edge or blue message which is calculated based on the red messages is shown here, and it depend on the messages on the previous stage. So these are red messages, and these are blue messages. Okay, this procedure is usually called unrapping of the Tener graph. And, okay, the main difference here is that we, okay, here we have edges, and these edges are converted to nodes in the neural network. And the connection of the edges is corresponds to the connection here. Okay, so this is the idea how to construct a neural network, and this is the example. So, okay, we see that for each iteration in the Tener graph, we will have two layers in this neural network. So here we have check layer, and here we have variable layer. At the same time, we will have input mapping and output mapping. So, and we should put these two layers, the number of times which corresponds to the number of iterations which we want to use. Okay, and so you, you may ask, what is the main advantage of this approach? The main advantage of this approach is that we can add trainable weights here to this neural network as usual, and then use backpropagational in order to train it. Okay, we will start with existing decoding algorithm, add weights, and try to find use this algorithm to obtain better performance. Okay, this is the main idea of this approach. Okay, and so we applied it for 5G LDPC codes, and let me recall that 5G LDPC codes are defined with use of, okay, I defined with use of this nested parity check matrix. So as 5G should cover a lot of cases, a lot of rates, a lot of lengths, so everything is defined by this parity check matrix, and then in order to apply, in order to choose LDPC code for some particular scenario, we just choose sub-matrix of this matrix. So here we show, okay, red and blue sub-metrics, and this corresponds to different rates. Okay, what, what should we do in what follows? In what follows, we should see our, okay, as 5G LDPC codes are quasi-cyclic, it is very reasonable to use, so we see that if we just add trainable weights for all the nodes, we will have several problems, especially the problem in which we have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of trainable weights, and the training procedure will be very slow. At the same time, as we use quasi-cyclic LDPC codes, we can use the same weight for the whole, so quasi-cyclic LDPC codes are constructed like this. We start with the base matrix, and then do extension or lifting of this base matrix with circular matrices or circulants. And we can use the one weight for the whole circulant. At the same time, we can use residual connection in order to speed up training and to better, okay, residual connection is done in order to train these intermediate layers faster. Okay, and the final architecture is shown here. See that variable layer depends on the previous variable layers all, so this is the residual connection. Okay, and so let us look at the performance. Okay, and so let us look at the performance. Okay, seems to be. Okay, sorry. We have, okay, it's interesting that it does not switch the slide immediately, but there is some delay. Okay, in any case, simulation results are here. And we see that, okay, first of all, what was compared? So first of all, we have a random coding bound, which is also used Paulian ski bound and it is shown here. Let me explain this scenario. So first of all, we use the number of information bit was equal one hundred twenty. The rate was equal to zero point five. And the, okay, modulation was chosen to be QPSK. So we wanted to start, we started with short LDPC codes and wanted to improve the performance of these codes because these codes actually work, does not work very well. That is why polar codes were adopted to five G control channel. Because for short lengths, LDPC codes are not so good. So, okay, so first of all, fundamental bound, which is here, so random coding bound. Second, we see some product algorithm. It is shown here, so by, by this magenta curve, some product with fifty iterations. And also we have some product with twenty iterations. It is shown by red color. And also we show normalized min sum algorithm. We see that it is worse than some product with the corresponding number of iterations. And we see the result of our neural network is twenty iterations. We see that our neural network outperforms some product. Our neural network use min sum activation functions. But it outperforms some product algorithm with the best activation function, hyperbolic tangent activation function. So, okay, our neural network, simple algorithm, min sum algorithm, outperforms complex some product algorithm. And also we see that it practically coincides with some product with fifty iterations, which is shown here. So by means of neural network, we both improve the performance and reduce the number of iterations, which is important for practical, for practical use of these codes. Okay, here we see the histogram of the weights. And we see that the weights are different for different iterations. And, okay, the offsets, so useful subsets are also different. We see that the weights, how the weights are distributed. And we see that on different iteration, which we should use different weights. Okay, you may ask why neural network works better than, for example, normalized min sum or some product? Okay, the answer is rather simple. So you, you know that LDPC codes, short LDPC codes are bad because they have a lot of small trapping sets. So and this trapping sets actually does not allow us to, okay, these trapping sets are short cycles in the graph. This is actually a problem. That is why, so these trainable weights, they help us to deal with small trapping sets. So the weights are chosen in such a way that the decoder does not, is not stopped in this small trapping set. That is why the performance becomes bad. Okay, let me show another slide. So these are the results for high rate, zero point seventy five. And we see that at this rate, so, okay, the curves are the same. The only the rates is different. Okay, at this rate, we coincide fully coincide with some product fifty iterations and even better than this algorithm when, when we use high signal to noise ratio. Okay, so for high rate, we have, we have even better performance. And the last is a rate zero point two. So actually here we coincide with some product with twenty iterations. But at the same time, the gap in comparison to normalized min sum is the best here. So this is the largest gap which we have. Okay, as a result, what can we say? So we suggested an algorithm and applied it for, this algorithm is a combination of min sum decoder and machine learning techniques. And so we combined these two. So we just created sparse neural network from Tener graph. Then use min sum activation function and add, add the trainable weights to this neural network. And this allows us to significantly improve the performance and at the same time to reduce the number of iterations. Because these trainable weights help us to deal with small trapping sets. Okay, this is the main idea, okay, how to improve the performance. Let us move forward. And, okay, this is a screenshot from the book, which is called Modern Coding Theory. I would recommend if you are interested in coding theory and LDPC code. This is the best book you can choose. So this is by Rupger Banke and Tom Richardson. And, okay, actually, why not to replace activation function? Why should we use min sum? Okay, the only requirement is shown here. So activation function and check node and variable node should fulfill these two requirements. Okay, I think this function in check node, it should depend on the module and the product of science. And the variable, in the variable node, it should be odd, odd function. This is, this is all which we want. And these are very simple requirements. Let us try to exchange it. And the authors of the next work, they moved forward. So why not to replace the activation function which with just another neural network, which is shown here and called F? So the idea here is to just, okay, we use predefined weights, right? We use trained weights. But, okay, in this architecture, this neural network, which is called F, it just gives, so it just accepts. So the input of these neural networks are current messages. And then this neural network produce weights for us, produce weights. So we produce weights on the fly. And this neural network is the same for all the nodes in the, in the, in this architecture. And so in my opinion, it's rather clever architecture. Okay, it can be used and the authors show some advantages of this architecture. And this paper was accepted to Neural Lips, which is, okay, one of the best conferences in machine learning. At the same time, we tried to reproduce these results. And we faced with some issues. So this training should be very, you should train it very carefully because this function is fully connected. We have a lot of trainable weights. And also, so, okay, these are the results which, which were produced by us. And so unfortunately, now setup we will not for LDPC codes. So they, they also used very short BCH code in order to train. We use some reasonable length LDPC codes. And, okay, our loss function did not decrease. So we had some problems with training in this architecture. But at the same time, the architecture is rather clever. And, okay, and it can also help. So we have instead of a lot of trainable weights, we have only one neural network, which accumulates all the trainable weights and just produce the weights for us each time, for each node. So in my opinion, this architecture is rather good and it should be better investigated. Okay, what else can I say? So another approach is called syndrome based approach. And this syndrome based approach is very simple. So it is based on syndrome based decoding. You know that linear codes can be decoded with use of just syndrome. Syndrome is a product of the received sequence by the parity check matrix. Clearly, if we have a code word, then this product will be equal to zero. If we don't have, if we receive some message with errors, we'll obtain some non-zero syndrome. And this non-zero syndrome defines the code, coset of the code. And so the idea of the authors was to, was to just recover the error vector from this syndrome. And, okay, that is why this block is called noise estimation block. So, okay, nothing depends. So as the input of this neural network is just the syndrome and absolute value of log likelihood ratios, then nothing depends on the code word and we can train it on any code word. And another advantage is that we can use any architecture here. We can use fully connected neural network or something else. Okay, let's see the performance. So this is how it was trained. And we tried it on BCH, on short BCH code in order to, okay, in order to find the best performance. And we see that the method is nice and it can be used for any code, not only LDPC code. But at the same time, we see that the bounded distant decoding of BCH code, it is blue curve, is just, okay, you know that BCH codes are good because they can correct errors. So, okay, and I think in this setup, we were able to correct three errors. And this hard decision decoding algorithm is better than well-trained syndrome based decoding algorithm. Even with soft decision. Okay, we try and different architectures of this neural network. We try different methods. But unfortunately, there was no possibility to beat this bounded distant decoding method. Okay, so what about, so the last part of the talk will be connected to polar codes. And, okay, let me briefly, briefly discuss this, this idea. Okay, so the main idea here is to somehow apply the methods for polar codes. And this is not straightforward because parity check matrix of polar codes is very dense. And it is not possible to obtain belief propagation algorithm because we have very huge degradation of the performance. That is why it was suggested to create just latent representation. So what does it mean latent representation? Okay, here is the encoding graph of polar codes. And, okay, let us add some intermediate on latent nodes everywhere here. And then, okay, the representation will be definitely sparse. And it is shown here. So we have parity check matrix with latent variable, with latent variables here. And it is very sparse. And we can use Tener, Tener based method. And we can apply it for these polar codes. At the same time, it's not very clever to apply it for this huge parity check matrix. So we started from the line sixty four and with adding of, with the adding of latent variables, we obtained more than four hundred. So it will be a problem to apply our machine learning algorithm. That is why they were suggested to prune this map. So it was suggested in the literature many times. And in order to prune it, there are some special rules which allow to reduce the size of the matrix. It is shown here. And we see that the prune matrix is rather small and we can apply our methods on it. And so the final two plots I will show are application of neural network methods for polar codes. First of all, we have SCL, successive constellation list decoder, which was suggested by Talia and Vardian. This is a state of the art method to decode polar codes in five G. We see that this is SCL one, two, four and eight. At the same time, if we use our sparse representation and some product algorithm, okay, BP algorithm or some product algorithm, we are very close to SCL. We are, okay, some product is here, it is marked with yellow. We practically coincide with SCL eight. So it is not so bad, especially if you mean, if you say that the new decode is parallel and it is not, it is not sequential. But the problem here is that we need huge amount of iterations. It is more than one thousand iterations to achieve this performance. If you use smaller number of iterations, the performance immediately degrades to this performance. And, okay, our neural network works like this because we have only limited number of iterations for neural network. And, okay, so the performance for now is, is here. So it is marked by magenta line. And with green line, it is with use of CRC. Okay, the performance is not so bad, but it's only for short code. But for the code of larger lengths, we see that the degradation is even bigger. And so the performance is here. Despite of the fact that the performance is a little bit worse, we would like to mention that, first of all, the new decode is parallel. And second, so that there is a room to improve this performance and to suggest, so it's actually very, a hot topic to suggest some parallel decoding algorithm for polar codes. And so if you are interested in error correcting codes, it's a time to try to, to work on this. Okay, so the main summary, let me give the main summary. So we suggested to combine machine learning and decoding methods and create machine learning based decoders. So we validated the methods for LDPC codes. And for LDPC codes, Tener based method allows us to improve the performance and to reduce the number of iteration. And it's very successful application. At the same time, another methods are interesting. But for now, so they, they do not work so well as Tener based method. And also for polar codes, it's an open and hot topic, how to make parallel decoders for polar codes and also how to apply neural networks in order to obtain the performance which is not worse than SCL eight. Okay, so thank you for the attention. And so if you have any questions, please ask.
Good day. I'd like to ask you about how you deal with overfitting with your neural network?
Okay, thank you for the question. So I forgot to say about it within the talk. But, so actually, we do not have overfitting problem for this sparse neural network because we have very small number of trainable weights. And we never observed it in, in, in our simulations. It is much easier to train it.
Another question?
Tafinsov Konstantin from Huawei. Hello. So I have a question about whether you check the feasibility of this proposed algorithm to the digital logic implementation?
Okay, the only difference here will be in comparison to usual min sum, which is implemented everywhere, so in trainable weights. We try to make as much common weights as possible. And in principle, so in my opinion, it can be implemented. And so we have a patent already on this algorithm. But, okay, so we didn't implement it ourselves. But in my opinion, it should be feasible.
Have one more question?
Yes, Punkov from Huawei. Now you see polar code and LDPC code very successful decoding by standard, standard procedure and algorithm. Do you compare your resources and how many multipliers headers for your algorithm and for standard? And who is better? Because this is main problem usually.
Okay, thank you for, for a good questions. So first of all, let me emphasize which problems we solve. So LDPC codes are good with standard algorithms only for moderate and large lengths. So for short lengths, they are not so good. That is why for polar codes, we adopted to five G. So we focus mostly on short LDPC codes in our research and try to add these trainable weights in order to deal with trapping sets of these codes. And for short code, so the complexity of our algorithm is bigger definitely. But, okay, it should be able to implement it because we have more weights in our algorithm. That is why so. But, okay, I don't have for now the calculations, but the complexity is comparable. So it is bigger, but it's, it's not so, okay, maybe two times big or four times. It's not so big. Regarding polar code, so the main problem is parallel decoding of polar code. So the problem is opposite. So these codes do not work very well for long lengths because the procedure, the decoding procedure is sequential. And we cannot just apply it for the length one hundred thousand, right? And so our, our main idea was somehow improve it. Maybe it's not about neural networks at all. But, okay, in any case, it will be interesting to find some algorithms which can do parallel decoding of polar codes. And for this case, the complexity was not investigated. The number of iterations was huge. But, okay, for now, the main, the main goal is to find a method to decode polar codes in a parallel way.
Thank you, Alexei. And unfortunately, we are limited in time. So I want to thank Alexei for the comprehensive study, for the very interesting speech. Next speaker is Dmitry Fomin with a study duplex based on volumetric module technology from South Rural State University.
Good afternoon, colleagues. My name is Dmitry Fomin. I present to you the report duplex based on volumetric module technology. I begin my report from definition, the purpose of the research and target parameters. The duplex is designed to ensure the simultaneous operation of the receiving and transmitting microwave paths in communication systems when the transmission and reception of signal are in communication systems when the transmission and reception of signal are carried out simultaneously at different frequencies. The purpose of the research is to present the possibility of using the volumetric model technology to develop a duplex which meets the requirements for electromagnetic isolation between the transmitting and receiving channels. The first channel of the duplex is turned to the center of frequency of one thousand eight hundred megahertz. And the second channel of the duplex is turned to the frequency of two thousand four hundred and fifty megahertz. Target parameters are insertion loss less than one decibel and isolation between channels more than twenty decibels. The target parameters of the developed duplex based on volumetric module technology, we adopted from its functional analog implemented by microstrip technology. The functional analog is presented in the article that you can see on the slide. Also, you can see the structure of the micro, the proposed duplex implemented by microstrip technology, its isolation in a frequency range and simulation results in table one. The basic structure element of the research duplex is a volumetric strip slot transition. It is presented on the slide. And the configuration of the volumetric strip slot transition consists of two almost strip lines located on different sides of a multilayered electric structure. The slot resonator cut in a metal plane located between the layers with strip lines. The strip lines intersect with the slot resonator and end with idle mode at a distance of a quarter wavelength. Also, on the slide, you can see the electrical characteristics of volumetric strip slot transition. They are presented as a S parameters, S one, one and S two, one, in a frequency range. The first design of the duplex is consists of two volumetric strip slot transitions that placed one above the other. They are presented, the construction is presented on the slide. And here is the simulation results. You can see that for the isolation between the channels at a frequency of one thousand eight hundred megahertz is more than, is less than twenty decibels. That is unacceptable and requires improvement. The reflection coefficient is less than ten decibels for both channels. Here you can see the electrical characteristics in a table one. And the increasing of isolation between channels can be achieved by displacing the slot resonators relative to the common strip line. You can see the picture on the slide where two slot resonators displacing on a distance L. We must select the optimal location of three independent dimensions of duplex, they are L, L one and L two. As a result of solving the problem of optimizing the dimensions of the duplex and its electrical characteristics, the dimensions L, L one and L two will obtain. It follows from simulation results that the isolation between channels is minus twenty four point four decibels at a frequency of one thousand eight hundred megahertz and minus twenty seven point nine decibel at a frequency of two thousand four hundred and fifty megahertz. The reflection coefficient for both channels is less than ten decibels. Here you can see S parameters for the first and for the second channel. For the first channel, the reflection coefficient is approximately minus fifteen decibels. And for the second channel, the reflection coefficient is approximately twenty decibels. Here you can see the electrical characteristics that are presented in the table two. And conclusion, the article presents the possibility of creating a duplex based on the volumetric model technology. The design of the duplex is presented as a multilayered structure that consists of six basic elements. The advantages of the presented duplex are manufacturability of design, compactness and possibility of optical design. For the presented duplex, the isolation between channels is minus twenty four point four decibels and minus twenty seven point nine decibels for, for the first and for the second channels. The insertion loss is zero point four decibels and zero point nine decibels for the first and for the second channels. And the return loss is fifteen decibels for the first channel and twenty decibels for the second channel. All other electrical characteristics are comparable to the functional analog based on microstrip technology. That's all. Thank you. I, I finished.
Or maybe eight resonator in sometimes fourteen. And isolation must be between channels must be no like, no, eight, eighty dB or maybe one hundred dB. Is it possible to use your and some, maybe some words about characteristic? I mean power for your duplex and so on.
Okay, do you hear me now? I can't answer your question. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we hear you.
In this presentation, we show the possibility of creating the duplex using the volumetric modular technology with the help of slot resonators. And we use only two resonators. And you are right, the isolation and other characteristics is not for manufacturing for customers. But you can, you can create the duplex with more volumetric strip slot transitions and the isolation will, will be great. Approximately, if you use two slot resonators, I mean, I mean, two volumetric strip slot transitions, the isolation will be near forty decibels and so on. We only, the purpose of our presentation was only to show the possibility of creating the duplex. That's my answer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dmitry, for a very interesting study, very interesting presentation.
Change is constant. Advances that didn't seem possible are now within reach. In this lifetime, we may witness our biggest questions answered, our toughest challenges solved, our greatest advances reached. But this will require a different way to innovate, to nurture the far-fetched, to converge, to secure, to lead. The next frontiers will require seamless workflows, ultra-precision measurements and intelligent analytics. They will require innovators to stay ahead, to go faster, to disrupt. And there's only one company in the world that can keep up. Key site. With expertise in high-frequency design, scalable testing solutions, network visibility, complex modulation, protocols, and engaged with the latest standards and technology pioneers. We test, so you can dream.
The next study presentation will be Open Questions in Wi-Fi Transceiver Design by Konstantin Tafinsav. Sorry for my pronunciation, maybe if I'm wrong, from Huawei Moscow Research Center.
Good day, everyone. So I represent the one-on-one representative of Huawei. And I want you to describe a little my team first. So a small team which is focused on DPD, digital predistortion, Wi-Fi short-distance algorithms. We are a small team, but we are producing and making industry, apply our algorithms to the industry and already did some DPD implementation for several Huawei projects. And we are not only focused on DPD and also extend our attention to other fields. And our main target now is to, is to design the efficient transceiver architecture. Not maybe not design, but explore this efficient architectures and try to implement them for the products. You can see what kind of products our team is focused on. Smartphones, access points, wearable devices. Also, we are going to increase our attention and now we are switching to other topics like this. You can see advanced topics like OFM, NOMA, non-orthogonal multiplayer access, wake-up radio and so on. Also, we are interested, but not yet started, some algorithms and ideas related to millimeter wave radar sensors, which is possible to use in this device for some user experience like measuring human activity and biological parameters and so on. Also, there is very interesting topic for such devices is energy harvesting for wearable devices. We are very open to get the ideas and to, we are exploring for any possibility of collaboration with students, with universities. And also, one off-site topic, but I would like to focus on it a little bit. This is the open source replacement. So let's proceed. This is just a picture which is demonstrated in non-orthogonal multiplayer access. So comparing to current orthogonal multiplayer access, we have different users transmitting in different slots, time, frequency or code divided. Now, this very interesting direction, which is now very good, have a big focus in industry and also in scientific society is non-orthogonal. Like we put several users on same frequency slot, but they can transmit together using different power levels. And then on the receiver, we try to recognize all, all the users and substrate the one user to another and get the all information from all users. But our actual, our actual now, we are focused on the Wi-Fi physical layer. So this is just a picture, which is we are very low level and we are focused on this. You can see this is OFM modulator including digital predistortion and analog RF part. Some detail here. As you can see from, as you can see from the publication and the real measurements, the main and the one of the biggest power consumption from the transceiver, not only Wi-Fi, but many others. The numbers may be really different. This take, takes, took by the PA, power amplifier. So we are focused on the, this key component in the transmitter and try to improve its efficiency. Maybe a big part of the Moscow Research Center working on the same task, but for different applications. We focus for Wi-Fi and also we have, you heard the other guys who made the power amplifiers improvements for base stations and so on. So what is the task? We have a trade-off to improve performance in terms of efficiency, in terms of error vector magnitude, like in-band, this is in-band error, mask outband emissions, reduce outband emissions. And also, we need to maximize the output power, possible output power with reducing the consumed power. By other words, increasing efficiency. So this is our target. Usually, for OFM transmitter, it's necessary to use as, as much linear device as possible. Because of, but because of big power average ratio and so on, it is not possible and not useful. And most industries use the nonlinear devices as power amplifier with such characteristics. And if you can see, this dashed line is the efficiency characteristics from input power. And you can see the most efficient point placed here. So at the big nonlinear, where is the big nonlinear? So first, first step, the DPD techniques was evolved a big and now it's industry standard and used everywhere. And we focused on implementation, the smallest complexity, smallest area and best efficiency. So you can see some results, very many big distortions we have in our device. And we applied DPD techniques and reduce power amplifier nonlinearity and some other nonlinearitys like IQ imbalance and also AD, D C, A D C nonlinearitys as well. But this design requires that we need to check our algorithms on real devices. And then we, only then, we can get the real information about how algorithm performs well or not. So, and this makes, sorry. So this is one side of the problem, so we can resolve it using some digital methods. Another way, we can use some analog methods to find the very good for analog, analog part architectures. So for example, several, you can see several architectures just I listed here that can be used. And now it is better to focus on these architectures which produce, which are naturally nonlinear and even switch, switching mode, PAs totally nonlinear. But applying this digital method, digital predistortion, we can leverage this nonlinearity in these architectures, which was not, which was not chosen for implementation before. So we can try different applications, different architectures and try to use them. So as I told before, this company, so this component is actually the part of the big system. And this, and we need to evaluate the performance of whole system, not only PA. Because as we saw in publications, most publications related only one part of improvement of one part or separated part. But for the production lines, we need to evaluate overall performance. So we need to consider all these parts in this, which is produced in single chip. Sometimes it can be, it can be external chip, but the system still need to evaluate it together. So algorithms can be tested using FPGA-based prototyping. So we write code implementing in FPGA, you can connect physically to the real devices and to measure real characteristics. Unfortunately, this method don't work, doesn't work for, for PS, which is not yet produced. So for very new architectures and so on. In this case, we have to apply the simulation. So, and this simulation should be done using, should be done using mixed signal simulation, where the spice level simulation, schematic level simulation combined with very low Python algorithm implemented, digital, digital logic. And because one of the big, main part of the trade-off is efficiency. And efficiency, we can measure only using the schematic level simulation if we don't have existing devices. Even we have existing devices and lab setup is not usually optimized for power consumption. So this also not good way to estimate the efficiency. So this is, the next part of my presentation is related to one big problem we have in Huawei now. Not only one, but due to the sanctions, we not only limited to use the modern process to produce ICs. And this is also limitation that we need to design low complexity algorithm, which use very small amount of gate count. Because we have to use the big, big size technology, at least twenty-two or higher nanometers. Maybe in future, we will have access again, restore, maybe get from another way. But, and another part is computer aided design. So all of you use the computers, computer, computer to simulate something, right? To produce something, to create, to, and so on. But the situation in the world is that the computer aided design for electronic does not have good enough products in open source. They all occupied by the vendors, which occupies more than ninety percent of the market and so on. But for example, for software, there are good But for example, for software, there are good stories, very good stories. And you know, many tools, many software, which is already developed like open source and you can use and alternatively use to the vendors' software. So, but in IDA, it's, the picture is not so good. What we can do? We can try to use these tools in your daily work and not replace at the moment, but also try. First, try and to increase the knowledge about these open source tools, which can give us opportunity to extend the society related to this open IDCAD tools and involve more people to it. And this can lead to, more contribution can be done. Maybe some of the, some of the hardware designers are also good programmers and may then implement some algorithms in this open source tools. Then, we can get better these CAD tools, which can replace the vendor specific, which can not replace but be a good option for the, related to the vendor specific. So I just put here some pictures, which I found on internet. So I think you are very familiar with MATLAB, Python, alternative. Python has many software options and so on. Also, some vendors even open their, their code to the, to open source and invite people to contribute to this tools. This is Xilinx and their HLS system. What else? Also, there are some layout design, digital synthesizers. TICAD is almost production level open source tool to design the electronic, electronic PCBs and so on. Also, maybe not so good here. You can see, there is the spice, free spice tools, which can, and our target now, we are trying to simulate spice, free spices. There are many tools about the spice and also the Python implemented digital algorithms. And also, we can use the open source digital synthesizer to check the area to gate count. As you remember, I asked some question about feasibility of some algorithms and how many resources it is required. And if different scientists in different countries try to, trying to compare their devices, they need to use the same tool, same version, same options. Unfortunately, if you use the vendor specific tool, tool chain for this, it's not possible usually to have clear comparison. But if you use open source tool, you can clear compare it. Another question is that the open source contribution is not only writing the code. You don't need to write it. The open source contribution can be like, check, get this code, run this software and check whether it's good for you or not. Whether it can resolve, solve your question or not and so on. Also, you can write documentation, you can write some experience and so on. For students and for young scientists, I think it's very good opportunity to use these tools and to try it and to understand whether they good or not. This is an example of synthesis tool, EOSIS Open Synthesis Tool. It is have good representation and also related to, and this tool, I think, can be used as, how to say, as some reference tool to check the gate count feasibility for your algorithms in real digital logic. I think it's almost all conclusions. You can see here, if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Thank you, Kirill, or I'm sorry, thank you, Konstantin. Do we have questions? Yeah.
Thank you very much. Tell me please. Tell me please, Huawei as the commercial company use their open source project also in its commercial activity?
I think I not, I cannot tell you like the Huawei representative, but I can tell you that Huawei already use many open source in their software related activity. And, and also, they contribute to, especially for AI related things, contribute to this. But this is, but this is very new topic for us. Because we faced this problem just two years ago, before we live in happiness and we have a lot of money and we can have a lot of licenses and so on. Now, the things are changes, are changing, so we have to go in this direction.
Okay, thank you.
But also, one more thing, that is, we are also, our target, big target is to collaborate with universities, which also
I know, yes.
Which also have not enough money to get these tools, I mean, the vendors' tools. Maybe they can, but not everyone.
I understand, okay. And will we see in near future, maybe work and CAD from Huawei company?
Sorry?
Work it, computer aided design program, software from Huawei company?
I think no.
In near future?
I think no, because you know, if you, maybe I mentioned in my slides, the in-house development is very expensive. We have not much resources to spend it in-house. Some companies can do in-house CAD design. But also, we developed, Huawei developed, you know, the home and operating system, it's in English, sorry. Harmony, Harmony OS, which is actually treated like open source, some part of it and also people try to contribute it and based on open source. So this is the software side. But hardware side, there is not much results in the, in the open source. So as I, as my, I would like you to start to use these tools and we can, then, we can talk on the same language. So we can use same tools, we can collaborate in this area. We can check your results, you can check our results and so on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seems that we have no questions. Thank you very much, Konstantin, it was very interesting. And our next, our next presenter will be Kirill Kolpiv from Lomonos of Moscow State University and Huawei Moscow Research Center. And the presentation will be about application of the Phineon Element Method for calculating the S parameters of duplexers.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kolpiv Kirill. I'm from Huawei. And today, I want to speak about the application of the Phineon Element Method for calculating the S parameters of the duplexers. Duplexers are widely used in modern, modern communication technologies. They work as passband cavity filters. They pass only the certain frequency range. Due to their complex geometry, it is important to provide the numerical simulation of their cavity filter. It was chosen the Phineon Element Method for the simulation. In Phineon Element Method, we divide our volume into small cells. After that, we choose their basis functions, which are not zero, only on few cells. Our function that we want to know is represented as the sum of these basis functions. And the task is to find unknown coefficients. Cavity filter is their metallic structure. Their incident field comes from their caucial port and move inside their cavity. As you know, their electrical field satisfies their Maxwell's equations. The boundary condition of their metallic boundary is known. It postulates the equality to zero of their tangential component of the electrical field. Also, their boundary conditions for caucial ports are also known from their paper. Here, you can see the system of mathematical equations. E is the electrical field. Omega is the volume of their cavity filter. D omega sub one is their metallic boundary. D omega sub two is the incident caucial port boundary. D omega three is the boundary of their second caucial port. E sub zero is the vector of the electrical field in their incident caucial port plane. And K sub zero is the wave number of the vacuum. After the equation system is determined, we can go forward to the Phineon Element Method. We choose the Phineon Element space. It was chosen the Nadelic Phineon Element space. And also, we choose their Phineon element. You can see on the slide, the Nadelic first kind, second order Phineon element. After that, we multiply our equation by the test function V, integrate by parts, apply the boundary conditions. And as a result, we have the weak integral form of our task. Now, we can start the simulation using the Python code with open source libraries. For this presentation, I decided to check the S parameters of three duplexers. Here on the screen, you can see the first test duplexer. You can see the geometry and mesh. The approach is to validate our method, test it. And the target duplexer number one, you can see the geometry and mesh. The geometry was taken from their paper. And the third duplexer or target duplex number two, you also can see its geometry and mesh. You can notice that the geometry of this duplexer is more complex than previous two. After this, we create the mesh using the open source meshing algorithms. And here, you can see the results for the first test duplexer. You can see the S parameters. The red line is our results with Phineon Element Method. Red line is HFSS result. And WIPL-D is matched as the blue line. The HFSS and WIPL-D is their commercial software. So you can see that for our test duplexer, the results are close. For the second duplexer, the results are also close. And let's go further for the most interesting results, the third duplexer. Here, you can see that Phineon Element Method simulation result, results are close to the HFSS result. But also, you can see the frequency shift between HFSS and WIPL-D results. It is easy to explain. This is the deal. The accuracy of the, the accuracy of the simulation is dependent on the mesh. Since our software HFSS and WIPL-D use a different mesh, meshing algorithm, we can obtain their different results. Also, as you noticed, increasing the geometrical size of the duplexer leads to such mesh dependent issues. But this problem can be solved. The way to the solution is to create such uniform meshing algorithm, which will provide our, to us, the special mesh. This is one of the further approaches in our research. Also, I want to notice that these S parameters are not perfect. It should be the straight horizontal line in S two one parameter. This is the task of optimization of the cavity filters. This is also our further approaches in our research. And at the end, as the bonus, I want to represent for you the field distribution for the last duplexer at three point seven gigahertz. This is the symmetry, symmetry plane of this duplexer. We can see that this field distribution is common for, for cavity duplexers. That's all?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kirill. Do we have questions to Kirill? Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, my name is also Kirill, Kirill Zaidi from Euro Federal University. I'm just wondering, at slide six and seven, you show us the mesh. So it is volumetric mesh or it is only the surface?
No, no, this is, yes, this is the volumetric mesh. And the mesh is made from tetrahedrons.
Okay, so the cavity filled with air or with free space?
Free space, yes.
And this free space is also meshing, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And when you show us your obtained results, two first slides, it results obtained at one number of element in mesh with your simulator and WIPL-D?
What do you mean?
With one order of accuracy.
Ah, what order of accuracy? Unfortunately, I can't tell you the number of accuracy, not because of privacy policy, because this software and commercial software don't give us the answers on this question. But I can tell you that the Phineon Element, Nadelic first kind, second order. This element was chosen because it give, it gives us the best accuracy. And the first order means that this element consists of second order polynomials.
Yes, I see. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Another question?
Thank you. My name is Viktor Shotkin, I'm from the Euro Federal University too. My question is, why do you call this a duplexer? Because I can see only two ports over there, so it looks more like a filter.
The main approach of my presentation is to show that the Phineon Element Method can be applied for duplex simulation. So I think that there is no problem to create the geometry with more ports and simulate it.
Okay, I've got some more questions, if you don't mind. About the, can you show us the slide with the, the design of the duplexers? Ah, yes, this one, this one, number seven, yes. So the, the resonators inside the duplexer, they are hollow, so there is no metal in it?
Yes, yes, they are hollow.
Okay, but they are made of metal, yes?
Yes.
And can we use, for example, dielectric instead of the air in these models?
Usually, dielectric is used
Usually, dielectric is used in the caucial ports, but I don't remember if we can use the dielectric inside the cavity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your answers and for your speech. And I want to introduce another speaker. Our next speaker is also from Huawei. Mikhail Kamenev with a presentation, "Improved Permutation-Based Successive Consulation Decoding of Polar Codes."
The 11th logo mobile broadband forum starts now.
Ready to discover how 5G innovations are creating new value for different industries? Then follow us.
The first week is about to start.
Let's see what the big guys from the industry are going to deliver.
越难的事情，越值得做。
The mobile ecosystem is the great enabler across whole economies as we look to the future, our accelerated future. We are building it together with 5G.
Besides the keynote, we also have several industry talks, including technical summits and roundtables.
Follow us and stay tuned to find out more about MBVS.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mikhail Kamenev. I'm from Moscow Research Center of Huawei Technologies. In this talk, I would like to present an improved version of permutation-based successive cancellation decoding of polar codes. Let's first start with the definition of polar codes. And I would like to remind you that any block linear code can be defined using its generator matrix. And generator matrix of polar code of lengths n and dimension k can be generated by k rows of large square matrix defined as following, where this superscript denotes n times square product of the matrix with itself. For example, we can consider this matrix for code of lengths a. And if we consider the following set F, which is called frozen set, and in fact, this frozen set defines polar code. So we need to remove from this matrix rows with indices from this set, and we get the generator matrix of the code. So in fact, that's all that you need to know about polar codes. Now, let's move on to decoding. There are two widely used methods for decoding of polar codes. First is simple successive cancellation. Algorithm is running time is only n log n. And why polar codes attract so much attention? Because it was proved that infinite length polar codes, they achieve symmetry of any given binary symmetric channel. Another benefit of this algorithm is that it has very low latencies. It can be further reduced using fast SC decoding approach. But unfortunately, performance of this decoder for finite length codes is very poor. This issue can be solved using list version of this algorithm. Its running time is slightly higher. But at the same time, even if this size is of length 32, it is possible to approach maximum likelihood decoding performance for finite length polar codes. However, the per bit latency of this algorithm is much worse compared to that of successive cancellation algorithm. So the question is whether we can achieve latency of successive cancellation and the performance of successive cancellation list at the same time. Okay, maybe the answer is no, but still, we can improve performance with the same latency. And it can be done using permutation-based algorithm. The idea is, okay, we can use several permutations, permute the received sequence, and run the SC algorithm on different mutated vectors. So it is evident that latency of this approach will be close to that of SC algorithm. And what is more important, we can significantly improve the block rate performance. Of course, permutations here are of special kinds. They can be defined as follows. We need to consider an index of a code orbit and its binary expansion. Then, using matrix multiplication, we can obtain this vector. And matrix A is a n times n permutation matrix. Then, using this vector, we can define permutation as following. And such permutations are commonly called factor graph permutations. And it was proved, okay, if we have a polar code defined by some frozen set, then a mutated code is also a polar code, but it is defined by frozen sets that can be obtained by simply, by a simple permutation of elements of frozen set. Main result of this work is that, okay, in fact, we can use a much larger number of permutations that, in comparison with the previous slide, are defined using matrix A, which is an invertible matrix. Also, we have here some vector B, but it's not so important. Permutation is defined in exactly the same way. And it can be shown that if we use such permutations, then we get a polar subcode. I will introduce polar subcode later, but the main thing here is that polar subcodes, they can also be decoded using SC algorithm. So these permutations are also suitable for permutation-based technique. Now, let's consider some simulation results. Here, simulation result for AWG channel for polar code optimized for successive cancellation decoding. As I already told, successive cancellation, oh, sorry. Here's pictures, block rate versus EB over N zero. So as I already told, successive cancellation has quite poor performance compared to successive cancellation list, true red curves. But if we consider permutation decoding, so you can see black curve, it is permutation decoding with only factor graph permutations. And what is more important, for this particular case, we have only 40,000 of such permutations. But if you consider extra permutations, blue curve, right, yeah, blue curve. We can slightly improve performance. But the main problem here is optimization of permutation, because for the blue curve case, we have about 10 to the power 18 permutations. So optimization task is very complicated. For both these cases, yeah. Genetic algorithm was used. But for the blue one, I considered only some subset of permutations. Okay, another case, here's specially designed polar code with automorphism group. Really? Okay. Okay, here we have automorphism group. It means that if we take permutations from this group, then we don't need to calculate the frozen set for the mutated polar code. So in fact, we don't need any optimization, because we simply take random permutations from automorphism group, and they work quite good. But if you consider permutations from, not from this group, we can outperform this decoder. And also, extra permutations, in this case, also works quite well. And even approaches performance of successive cancellation list at block rate of 10 to the minus, block rate 10 to the power minus five. Okay, if I have no time, I will skip all these technical details. Yeah. Okay, and to conclude, in this work, it was demonstrated that for permutation-based decoding, we can use a much larger number of permutations. What is more important, these permutations allows improving block rate performance. And I would like to repeat that, okay, it is still an open question how these permutations can be optimized. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mikhail. Do you have questions to Mikhail? I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
I just, one question about decoding techniques. What are other techniques are used for decoding, polar code decoding in maybe in Huawei or some other vendor?
Okay, if we consider decoders with similar complexity as successive cancellation list, I think that's all. But there are other decoding techniques with higher complexity, for example, PBD decoding, some another success. It's called scan decoding, but I don't remember how this is, in the full form. Some variations of successive cancellation decoding, yes. For example, flip successive cancellation, its performance is slightly better than performance of successive cancellation, but still much poor compared to successive cancellation list. So unfortunately, successive cancellation list is still the best one.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have other questions? Thank you very much. Great. It was a set of presentation from our colleagues from Huawei. And right now, we start the set of presentations from just universities. And it will be actually my presentation. The name is 5G PBCH reliability estimation. Veradis Dova, she is from Siberian State University of Telecommunication and Informatic. And what we are going to discuss, just a second. Yeah, it works. Again, 5G again. It's a kind of trend nowadays. All of you, I guess, know what does it mean 5G and what it is useful for. If I can use another microphone, yeah, it's better. 5G is intended to provide such services like, it's shown here. Just a second. Like extended mobile broadband access with very high data rates, up to 20 gigabits per second. Extremely huge data rate. And of course, we need to do something to provide such as a data rate, like increasing bandwidths using massive MIMO techniques, beamforming and all of this stuff. We want to provide such services like ultra-reliable, low-latency communication, which requires very low latency and very high reliability, as it's, we can see from the name of this operation. And for this reason, we need to change the architecture of our networks. We should put our computing devices as close as it is possible to subscribers to make it possible. And another story will be massive machine-type communications, requiring very high subscribers density, up to 1 million devices per square kilometer. And it's again about processing, about our memory, how we can store this UE context at base station and so on. And this is a kind of introduction. And why we're talking about 5G and how does it relate with PBCH? 5G as a radio interface consists of base stations. Base stations in 5G are called GNB. It's like Wi-Fi access point, but I guess all of you knows what does it mean, GNB. And GNB in, this is shown, in Open Run concept. We can see the architecture from the point of view of 3GPP. It's our organization who is responsible for development of 5G networks. And another story is architecture changing from the point of view of Open Run strategy. And this is architecture around, which is very popular, especially if you're talking about open source projects. And the future, where we'll see maybe some new players with our lovely vendors, who will follow the open stack strategy. It means you can implement, for example, you can buy, as operator, you can buy the radio unit or distributed unit from one vendor. You centralize a central unit from other vendor, and they will work together. That's the strategy, the ideal of Open Run architecture. And we, as telecommunication university, as I guess any other telecommunication university nowadays, were interested to contribute to the open source software, especially for the 5G. And we started with the very beginning. Yes, I know that we have openly interface project. They have developed all the software for the 5G, for the LTE and so on. But it doesn't mean that nobody else can do the same. And we have started with the very beginning with synchronization between user equipments and base station. And the synchronization in 5G is done with physical broadcast channel, which is implemented and sent together with the primary and secondary synchronization signals and demodulation reference signals. And that was our first step. We make a code to generate such kind of signals, such kind of data payloads, just following the 3GPP standard. We make all of the functions to do that. And check after that, their reliability, how successfully it was, it works with errors and it deals with errors. That was our target. And yeah, I told you that as any self-respecting university, we have 5G SDR-based lab. And in our lab, we have a powerful server. We have USRP software, definable radio and 3010s. We have Z-boards on our board. And for students, we have Adalm Pluto devices. All of this stuff, we used to check the performance of our software. So we're not talking about hardware development, of course. We're just working on software development. And for this reason, we're using codes, we may say codes, SDRs, which are available on the market. And this was, actually, just a second. Logic is a little bit missed. We take a specification and we go, goes down to generate the payloads, to interleave these payloads, to do scrambling, calculate the serency, making polar coding, rate matching, which generates a total block and put together with the demodulation reference signals. I just take from the MATLAB card, because it's better for looking than from the C, C++ code, just for comparison. And we have this block. And the next story was to generate the bit errors and make the opposite procedures to do decoding, CRC deleting, the scrambling and all of this stuff. And after all of these things, we calculate the block rate which, for the PBCH channel, especially for these payloads, we checked it versus not SNR or EBIT, we know, but just for the, for the better showing versus number of errors in PBCH. So we changed, for example, 20 bits will be inverted by their values. And we've got the block rate based on CRC calculation. We can see such kind of reliability of this PBCH block and total. It was actually half year, half years ago. Right now, we are doing the software for the next step, for the C1 generation, core set zero and all of this stuff. But fortunately, this paper was prepared half year ago. And that was this study which we worked about. And actually, that's it. I'm in time. And yeah, some conclusions. Maybe you do have some questions about our short story? No questions? So, okay, in such a case, we can save our time and we can continue. Thank you, Vera, for your speech. Okay, and our next presentation will be a presentation by Denise Samsoff from Butker Institute of Nuclear Physics, Novosibirsk. Eight-channel polychromo, polychromo, I'm sorry, for spectral measurements in the frequency band of 0.1, 0.6 terahertz.
Good day, dear colleges. I will present talk with the title, "Eight-Channel Polychromator for Spectral Measurements in Frequency Band From 0.1 to 0.6 terahertz, Currently Developing Different Applications for Terahertz Radiation." In particular, in frequency range from 0.1 to 0.3 is suitable to design high-resolution radar is suitable to design high resolution radar operating in distances about 10 of kilometers. High range of frequencies suitable to investigate objects and materials of animate and unanimate nature. Then in connection with the need to investigate spectral properties of materials in and objects in frequency range from 0.1 to 0.6 terahertz, was created eight channel polychromator. To begin with, I describe this device, how it's was created. Then I describe the process of its calibration and present spectral properties of this device. Eight channel polychromator consists of two section. Each section have walls of each section made from sheet metal and covered from inside by material that absorbed terahertz radiation. Flux of terahertz radiation entering in the polychromator, split it and in eight parts and delivered to detectors. Each detector present itself as a unit. One unit consists from three parts. First part is where the guard transferring, transmitting radiation to micro strip. Second part is micro strip with short key barrier diode based on Ga Li arsenid material. And third part is amplifier with zero input impedance and output impedance equal to 50 ohm. In order to split initial terahertz beam was used beam polarization, polarization splitters based on one dimensional micro structure. Micro structure in this case was strap lines covering 50% of dielectric film. This structure reflects electromagnetic wave with parallel polarization, orthogonal to strip lines and transferred for electromagnetic width with polarization parallel to strip lines. In order to provide spectral in order to provide spectral selectivity of the detectors was applied band pass filters. Each filter consists of multiplex of frequency selective structures. On this slide presented photo of this structure, it is triple shaped. One moment. It is trip triple shaped cavities in thin copper foils obtained by electro coupling. Also on slide presented are spectral, spectral properties of the band pass filters. In during the creation of the polychromator was used a number of filters covering the frequency range from 0.1 to 0.6 terahertz. The calibration of the polychromator was carried out at shade equipment center at Novosibirsk State University. Here on the slide, you can see photo of the test bench and schematic of the experiment of the polychromatic calibration. First part is source of terahertz radiation. We used a number of back wave oscillators. Here. Second part of the this scheme is a quasi optical elements to deliver terahertz beam from source to analyzing device or to calibrated detector. As calibrated detector, we used Ga Li cell. Quasi optic elements used in the path to deliver terahertz beam was Teflon lenses forming parallel beam of radiation. Also was used a cheaper rotating at frequency 23 hertz, combined with lock in amplifier to provide measurements by Ga Li cell. Also was used polarization and removable mirror. Now I describe the methodology to collaborate, how we collaborate polychromator. Okay. First, it is necessary to align radiation sources with calibrated detector. Then it is, you should consider that efficiency of the generation non-uniform or the work deposit of back wave oscillator. So then you adjust source to the calibrated detector. Then you adjust polychromator initially with optic laser and then with the radiation source itself. This necessary because the frequency length is slightly is different and propagation of the beams also different. Then the adjustment is complete. You should in given consequences collaborate each channel of the polychromator. Collaboration was carried out after polychromator was created in 2015 and recently in 2020, after five years of its application. As you can see, no significant changes and in characteristic of polychromator wasn't. Here is the final characteristic of the polychromator spectral sensitivity. Then band pass filters are incented in the optical path inside polychromator. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Denise. Do you have any questions? It seems that everybody hungry, but the break will be just in 20 minutes. Thank you very much. It was very interesting. And in such case, we will continue. And our next story will be from Daria Lipchak from Production Association, Rals Optical Mechanical Plant. Plants, yeah. Sensorics. Maybe you will name your presentation. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daria Lipchak and I have a master's science degree in telecommunications. But here I am as a software engineer over the search and development bureau for your optical and mechanical plant. We provide medical devices. And today I will tell you about our story, our work, which were provided the last quarter of 2020 about development of our our pulse oximeter. So on the wake of pandemic, a demand of on pulse oximeter increased up to 30, 40% in Russia. So in these conditions, we need a pulse oximeter, which will work in different patients group of different age, of different morphology and so on and so forth. Since firstly introduced in eighties, a lot has been done in the field of pulse oximetry, starting from the physics of the sensor, construction of the sensors and continue with the post processing. So talking about the cost, what is difference between the professional medical device and the amateur one? The difference is accuracy. And to get this accuracy, accuracy in saturation extractions, pulse extraction, you need to do two things. First of all, you can add some additional sensor to the sensor itself. For example, to add ultrasonic sensor and so on and so forth. Or secondly, you can improve your processing techniques, algorithm and algorithm. So so did we. Because we needed to have the cheapest solution and use the cheapest and most popular optical sensors, which was NAL Core compatible sensors, which means this sensors use two wavelength, 660 nanometers and 940 nanometers infrared light. Because they are the most popular and easy to find on market. So when started, started develop the system, we found that there are a lot of requirements, both from the WHO organizations, Russian standards and so on and so forth, which are really contradictory. And I want to highlight the three ones which have mostly impact, impacted the architecture of the system. First of all, because we need to reduce the size of measurement model as make it as little as it's possible, we choose to apply more software filters instead of hardware. The same with the amplification because the plus signal, the your pulse signal is about 1% amplitude of the whole signal detected by the photo detector in the sensor. You need to pre amplify it and you need to filter it. So the novel in our devices that we used S T M microcontroller with sigma delta A D C, which has gain control, software gain control. And it provides us the smaller sizes of model. And also because in real world, the the pulse oximeter is working in the ambient light presence. You need to fight with this interference. And if the frequency of interference is low, you can just subtract the background. So all challenges I am introducing in my work, I divided to three groups. And first is signal extraction problem. So to to make this analog signal going through three meters cable from patient's finger to the device, you need to choose the discretization frequency. And from the one hand, you will be limited of channel Kotelnikov theorem. And from other hand, you will be limited by the amount of data you should proceed shortly. So in our device, we use a frequency of LED ignition around 500 hertz for each light emitting diode. And also between the periods of light emitting, we measure the background ambient light. The novelty here is that we not only turn on and turn off the diode, we are forming the pulse according to the requirements of our hardware and according to requirements of our software demodulation calculation complexity. Secondly, the signal is pre amplified and filter it, it's low pass filter it. And then we apply our gain control from S T M. So the software filtering here is pretty complex. First of all, the signal goes to the finite impulse response low pass filter with a card frequency around 7.5 hertz. And this wave goes goes then as a plateithmographic wave, for example, for the monitoring. And but also it goes to the second stage of filtering and band pass from half of the hertz to five hertz, which is exactly the range of the natural patient bits per minute. But the most complex part then is for the embedded software development is latest adaptive noise cancer, which is have a operation complexity and needs a lot of memory. So we used direct memory access, memory to memory transitions to improve the time of operation. And when we started, it was allowed about 10 seconds and now it's 1 second and 6. And the third problem we observed that the patients with different tissue transmittance like neonatal patients, patients of different gender or patients with abyss problems are not recognized well by the pulse oximeter. So we created the algorithm, which is works like some binary tree of decisions. We choose the first, choose the light emissions intensity. And if it's not enough, it will control the game. So what is the result? Result of our work is the system which you can see here. It's a device which can be also connected to the computer. And the data is stored into embedded S D card and can be retrieved. And in the picture from the right, you can see the real work of the device because it's half of the year past and the device is already registered in Russia. It's so it's safety and effective and have appropriate accuracy. And now it's working from the beginning of the mouse on the real neonatal intensive care unit in simultaneously with the Nihon code and NAL Core monitors, which also provide each E C G, so we can validate the accuracy of our device. Sorry. So for the present device, there are no such many things to be done, but we can practice with better motion compensation and also improve their accuracy further. But indeed, this device is have a lot of perspectives to further investigation from the scientific point of view. You can do the and aim is to use it for predict and diagnose special diseases by the form of piles wave or proficient variability index or pulse variability, whatever. So we are looking further for more scientific scientific help from the society to improve our devices. And we will do our best to help researchers with that. So thank you very much. Any question will be appreciated.
Thank you, Daria. Do you have questions? Yeah, sure.
My name is Zeraslav. I'm from Huawei. Thank you very much for such nice presentation. And my question is about the future plans because we also tried to detect heart rate reliability, which is more complex than just a pulse rate. And it possibly will allow to detect arrhythmia, for example, or some other conditions. Do you think it's possible to do using P P G? Because usually it's done by E C G sensors, by electrocardiography. And when we try to do very simple mobile E C G, we think the quality is not enough and there is a lot of noise. And we are now thinking, is P P G okay to detect H R V or not?
I understand. So the problem is the motion in
So the problem is the motion is the main problem for the PPG. So if there is no motion, we have a real proof that the pulse rate is the same with other monitors, ECG monitors. So if it's normal condition or the sensor is properly fixed on the patient, I think it's very possible. And I think it's very prospective field of investigation also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions? May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
As a person who nobody knows, nothing knows about this. My question is, how we can check the accuracy of saturation of oxygen? For example, yes, it shows us, for example, 95%. How can I find the real oxygen saturation in my blood?
Yeah, the real saturation could be found by the traditional invasive gas monitor.
So there is a method?
Yeah, there is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Daria. It was very interesting.
You are explorers. It's who you are. You think bigger and smaller. You think faster and slower. You take inspiration from everywhere, so you can innovate more. Your visions start in rooms, move to desktops, then to pockets, then to wrists. You ask big questions, pose impossible challenges, all the while seeking those who believe like you do. At Keysight, we believe. We nurture the far-fetched, remove barriers that limit possibilities, and stay ahead of the standards. We redefine precision in measurement, so you can go smaller. We integrate and expand test functions, so you can streamline complex workflows. And we surface intelligent analytics, so you can innovate faster. We believe in you. We are Keysight. We accelerate innovation.
Last round presentation before the break will be presentation by Ruslan Akpashov from Siberian State University of Telecommunication and Information Science, 5G system simulator development for schedule efficiency analysis.
Okay, thank you. Someone forgot the notebook. Okay, let me check. Okay, good day, colleagues. I'm glad to see you here. My name is Ruslan Akpashov. And the article is in a matter of the 5G. Not my fault. 5G system simulator development for schedule, scheduler efficiency analysis. But here, it is not only about the scheduler efficiency. The simulator is developing for vast number of, you know, part of the 5G analysis. And here we can see the part of it, which is in progress now. And I will show you some parts. First of all, about the 5G, this is the third time that we can see these values. Yes, you saw that. And what is the problem with 5G? The problem is that we need to get the theoretical assumptions for, for example, for number of base stations, for number of user equipments, for their characteristics, for example, transmission power, antenna gain, etc. And we actually need to put it into real world. And the question is, how can we put it into real world in more accurate way? And for this matter, the 5G simulators or 4G simulators exists. And this is, this is the, one of the main simulator, which is used for 5G analysis, especially the, for example, 5G air simulator, which is with link in GitHub. It's open source project. 5G link level simulator, Vienna simulator also is one of the popular, called RIGA, which is written in MATLAB and the open air interface. What is the problem with these simulators? It is that they, as far as I saw, they cannot provide you the solution for particular city, for particular area. For example, if you want to put your network, 5G network into Novosibirsk or into Moscow, New York, etc., it will not give you an accurate solution. And our goal is to do so. And for now, we're developing the 5G system simulator, which is, which will be able to calculate the radio channel quite accurately by getting some more information about the earth's surface, about the city, about the buildings, about the, etc. Okay, so let me show you just an example. It's a part of the front end. Now it's in progress, it's developing. And for now, as a front end, we can have only the map interaction with the Google Maps or OpenStreetMap, doesn't matter. And as the visual part, we have the heat map, which will be, which allows us to, to show the radio signal propagation or other characteristics for the base station planning, for the, for actual planning. And most of the time now, we writing the backend code. For now, the 24 classes already written and don't see at the front end. So what, what is the capabilities? The capability, one of the main thing here is that we can actually say for particular point at the geographical coordinates, at the latitude. And given latitude and longitude, we can say if it's a building, just to account the, for example, building penetration value for link budget. And if this is, if it's, if these coordinates are like in street, the Google Map will show you that it's a street. It will send you as an output the street name and/or the some area, like Novosibirsk area, like some else, if it's just an outdoor. If it's a building, it will get you an address. And here, yes, I forgot to say, we are creating it with the help of Qt Creator, which is open source project. And here you can get the part of the code. You're just sending this code to Google Maps with the latitude and longitude and get the result. Also, it was a bit, bit, bit of problem to get the earth's surface properties like elevation or heat above the sea. But we got through this and we parsed the Google Earth application with the help of the Selenium web driver. And you can see at the picture that putting, sorry, putting the pointer to some coordinates, it will show you at the, at the HTML, HTML, the elevation, which will helps us to simulate the earth's surface for particular area. Also, the capabilities, which is one of the most important part for 5G, which is mobility. We are now developing the mobility patterns for user equipments. The random walk is written and the street walking with the help of our students is written down, that we're also parsing the Google Maps. And we are directing the user equipment only on the streets, which also helps in some cases for, for radio planning. Manhattan and random waypoint still in progress. For now, it's not, it's not available. Also, since the 5G introducing the, in technical report 38901, the Cartesian coordinates with, which, with the help of this coordinate system, calculating all the signal attenuation and the, all of the radio channel characteristics. And our goal is to transform it into actual geographical coordinates. And we're also doing this thing just to help the application to put it into real part of the earth. Also, we can simulate, we have the additional class for antennas. But here is just an example. And here, these beams without any interference between them. And maybe some of you will help me to calculate the interference more accurately, because it's not my field and I would like to get some help in this matter. So this article was written, like most of your articles, half a year ago. And I've just simulated the scheduler efficiency. And the scheduler is in the Mac lawyer, which tells the physical lawyer how many resources will be transmitted to particular users and how many data will be transmitted, depending on some scheduler algorithms. So the physical lawyer, just short overview of the physical lawyer. We have here the resource block, okay, resource block element, which is the basic scheduling unit. Also, at the right side of the slide, you can see the numerology thing for 5G. I think if you, if you got through the 5G, you saw this feature. Okay, the number of algorithms which was used in the simulation model. And just results for data rate and the number of users. And we can see that it works and, yes, also worth, it worth to mention that each user has the full buffer in buffer, in PCP buffer. Okay, and also some little results for Doppler shift affection on the bit error rate for QPSK modulation. This calculation was done with the help of 5G air simulator. We got from them the formula. But still, we have a lot to do with the Doppler effect, with the mobility. And we now currently working on it, on this matter. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruslan. Other any questions to Ruslan? Many questions?
Thank you. Excuse me if I not clearly understand, but what numerical approaches are used in your simulation, especially in the field of wave propagation in the city?
I use the cost to 31 Hata for the signal propagation. But yes, I know the technical report, technical report 38901 also introduces the vast number of propagation models and...
It is statistical models, right?
Yes, yes, there are statistical models.
Okay, and what the difference between maybe 4G or 3G in simulation? Tell us, please.
The frequency range, the...
And what new phenomena appeared in 5G frequency band?
For example, the, at the higher frequencies up to 100 gigahertz, the wave... I forgot the word.
Let's speak in Russian with English accent.
Try. In another way, we will see the frequency, precisely signals on big frequencies. And bigger, the biggest signal attenuation depending on the material and etc. So also, we have to account these values.
Okay, thank you.
In 3G, in 4G, we didn't have the actual formulas, for example, for signal attenuation for a glass or inside the car or through the car, which is introduced in this technical report. So that's the main difference.
So I, I wonder, because I know, as far as I know, in 5G, it is very necessary to calculate the scattering from roughness surfaces. So this, this approach is also used in your simulation, as I understand?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other question?
Konstantin Tafinsa from Huawei. So the previous colleague asked several questions and one of the I wanted to ask, but I have another one. So you just mentioned then, you tried to analyze several available 5G simulators in the, in the open source. And you found that they are, they are not good for your, for your target. What is the difference? It's not clear for me. What, is it only for mapping to the, oh, sorry, to use interfacing to the map? Or what, what, what is the, your reason to design another one too?
Just because it's interesting to make something by myself. And the second part is the graphical user interface, which will help to, not just to simulate in terminal, but just to be available to change a lot of things just clicking some printers.
And consecutive question, are you planning to contribute this, your work to open source?
To those open source or into open source?
I'm not sure about your licensing model of, or licenses of your software and whether you have maybe some customer which, which is paying you money. And I'm not sure, but I'm interested why you...
I got you, yes. Thank you. For now, it's on GitHub, but it's in the private because it's pre, pre, pre-alpha version.
Okay, clear.
But maybe in the future, depending on how fast will I develop this, maybe it will be in open source, but for now, I don't know.
Good luck for you for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? No. Our next speaker is Ilya Deschinsky from Siberian State University of Telecommunication and Information Science. And his presentation about engineering the program for error reduction in determining the location of a Wi-Fi network connected mobile terminals indoors.
I'm presenting Siberian State University of Telecommunication and Information Sciences. And in next few minutes, I'd like to tell you about how we implemented the program for error reduction in determining the location of Wi-Fi network connecting mobile terminal indoors. Nowadays, geographic information technologies are rapidly developing. Using Wi-Fi standard is the most cost-effective for positional subscribers inside buildings and rooms and premises. As known as GPS technologies are used to find position of mobile terminals only in open air. So determining the mobile device position at a particular moment is difficult, especially indoors, because radio waves can propagate unpredictably due to constantly changing surroundings. To start with, there is a few reasons of significant difference, as shown on slide below. We can see the main. Shortly, these factors greatly reduce the achievable position accuracy, bringing many random factors into measurements and increasing the deviation of the position result. To decrease deviation in geolocation, it's recommended to use various signal processing techniques to reduce the variance of random measurements results. Main solution for reducing this is... Main solution for reducing this is use software, algorithms to filter input data or optimize indoor radio carriage, replacing Wi-Fi access points and so on. Now, we implemented the program of measurements error reduction based on use of Kalman filter. The Kalman filter uses a system dynamic model, non-control action and multiple sequential measurements to generate an optimal state estimation. The algorithm based on consists of two repetitive phases, prediction and update. The prediction of the state at the next moment in time is calculated in the first phase, as you can see on this slide, taking into the account the measurement inaccuracy. So after we convince your prediction, we move to second phase, say, state update. New information from sensor, in our case, from mobile terminals, corrects the predicted values in the second phase, also taking into account the inaccuracy of noiseiness and this of this information. So the radio strength, signal strange indicator, RSI values from several visible Wi-Fi access points were recorded to help us with the radio space scanning installed on several mobile devices. Measurements were recorded in two ways. We take a few mobile telephones from four to five and simultaneously measured RSI values at specific sampling points. We take these points, these points and these points, yeah. Each mobile terminal records from three to four RSI levels from each access point at each sampling, yeah. This from twelve to from twelve to twenty RSI values sending to server, which use uses a Kalman filter and. The, sorry. Yeah, we carried out from every sample point and one one mobile device that was consequently moving from through all this flow and measured not only at sampling points due to different data. So the original property of random RSI values was checked in this way of experiment. The mean values and standard deviation and set of the set practically coincident with the mean values and standard deviation of RSI measured by one mobile telephone at the same point, but at different times. In the future, this will allow firstly to significantly reduce and simplify the process making the reference maps of the premises by replacing many terminals with one. And secondly, to use the data measured by one terminal to track its movement. Speaking about main program code, since some variables of the full form are not possible to determine in the current circumstances, we implemented the simplified algorithm in this program. The program takes raw data from input file, in our case, that's RSI levels. And new strange value is calculated starting from the second element, because we need to predict this role, yeah. After that, there is a check in the loop to the end of the matrix length. If the predict power value obtained above the greater than the next matrix element by one half, we subtract one point zero, zero point one from the Kalman coefficient. And in the otherwise, we added. This developer program is based on the Kalman algorithm, which allows to track random fluctuation in incoming data obtained experimentally. For example, due to the movement of the object indoors, in example, a in a complex radio environment. So the results of the filter models we can see in this table. Blue line stands for real data we take from mobile phones and green line stands for filtered results. So as we can see, already on the second and third states, Kalman filter reduce the differ between incoming values. Evaluation of the program performance was made by comparing the scatter RSI values obtained experimentally with the values we perceived. So more detailed, we can see on this table, shows us the result of the comparison. The mean value and the standard deviation were calculated, so. To sum it up, our team developed this program and for reducing the error in determining the terminal position, the results obtained with the help of program law to decrease their RSI standard deviation almost twice and increase the accuracy of location of the object more than twice. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ilya. Some questions to you?
Thank you for your report, Iker Schotkin, Euro Federal University. My question is, so the aim was to make the RSSI more flat? Yes, as I understood, the terminal was on one place and that was the RSSI that we get.
Yes, the point of exactly this work is to average, take the average of RSI values we take from one mobile device in time.
Okay, okay, and this helps to 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 increase the accuracy of the indoor navigation? Okay, and it was used for what standard I didn't get?
This work stands for positioning mobile users indoors. Tracking also.
But based on what, on?
On RSI level firstly and secondly, we will switch to FTM methods based on round trip time and so on.
And what was the frequency then? The frequency?
Of Wi-Fi?
Ah, Wi-Fi, okay, it was Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi, two point four gigahertz or five gigahertz?
Or both.
Both, okay, okay, thank you.
Other question?
Konstantin Tafinsov Huawei. So my question is related to previous one. Is any improvements comparing with just averaging and using Kalman filter? Simple averaging and Kalman filter? Why you use so complicated?
No, it's not complicated as it seems, because Kalman filter is easy to use, because he starts at in about on the, as I showed before, on the third or fourth step of Kalman algorithm, he already satisfy our accuracy.
I mean complicated maybe in terms of implementation, next implementation. So you need then to implement this Kalman filter in some hardware or?
It's not more hardware, it's software, just totally. So this is why we don't think about this.
So do you analyze the improvements and the difference between just averaging of?
As far as we can gain access to hardware or access points, we can we can do this.
Okay, thank you.
Ask one more question. You told that you're using this for the positioning user equipment or some kind of user terminal inside the building indoors. And what is the accuracy of the position? What's the accuracy of the position in which could be achieved by this method?
After using Kalman filter, we can reduce error from about ten eight meters and the final accuracy of location is three point seven, three point five meters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. There is no question. Thank you for interesting study. And our next presentation is a presentation which will be done by Alexander Stenian from Siberian State University of Telecommunication and Information Science. And this presentation is performance evaluation of the SRS-based MIMO channel estimation on 5G new radio open source channel model.
Okay, good afternoon, dear colleagues. Today we presented our work on the performance evaluation of the SRS-based MIMO channel estimation on 5G new radio open source channel model. First of all, let me briefly introduce to 5G new radio capabilities and features. It's 5G technology is meant to higher multi gigabit per second peak speeds. It's ultra-low latency and new opportunities for server service delivery. It could be massive IOT, VR and AIR in mobile version. Also, we need considering what is the multi-user MIMO technology. In this technology, base station sent multiple data streams, one pair user equipment using the same time and frequency resources. Therefore, multi-user MIMO technology increase the total throughput and the base station has multiple antenna ports as the many as the user equipment's devices receiving data simultaneously. And of course, one antenna port is needed in each mobile device. Okay, in this investigation, we tried to solve next task is simulate the performance of SRS-based uplink least square channel estimation with open source channel model named Quadriga. Also show the effect of pilot sequence reuse on the performance of channel estimation MSE. SRS is uplink sounding reference signal, which is transmitted by user equipment to base station. In this SRS-based configuration, the uplink channel estimate using dedicated pilot signals. Also, the key problem of massive MIMO is the high amount of channel state information, CSI requirements at the base station for beamforming cooperation, subjected to delay in interpretation. In this work, we used the Quadriga as the channel model. Quadriga is the open source 3GPP 3D channel model referenced to implementation, which was developed at the Frank Hofer Heinrich Fehrtz Institute. The channel between base station antenna and the user equipment's antenna is composed from many propagation paths referred to as cluster. You can see this image. Okay, a few words about channel estimation. Channel estimation is used to obtain CSI and critical parts of multi-user wireless communication system. Pilot, cited channel estimation used from of subcarrier as a pilot. The channel estimations perform at pilot positions in the frequency domain using generated SRS sequence allocated at this pilot position over channel bandwidth. We simulated over the SRS-based channel estimation on more realistic channel realization and fully compatible with 3GPP thirty eight nine hundred one technical standards. This simulation bandwidth is chosen due to simplicity of OFDM waveform configuration using normal SRS sequence with COMB equal to pattern. Also, you see another model parameters in table. On this slide, we can see a picture showing base station and user equipment's distribution in the UMI model. It's urban model scenario, one of them. And next, the simulation results of the true frequency response of the selected channel and its least square estimation. And we can see S and R equal twenty. Next, one of task of this simulation is do evaluate the errors caused by cyclically shifted SRS reuse signal. And we can see the result on a picture. And our conclusions, the performance of SRS-based uplink least square channel estimation algorithm is simulated. This can be simulated using Quadriga channel model. Also displayed an effect of pilot sequence reuse on the performance of channel estimation. That's all.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have any questions to Alexander? May I ask one question? You told me that, not just for me, but for everyone, that you use it for multi-user MIMO channel estimation means you make an estimation of channels, SRSs, from two maybe users located in the same direction. Is it a part of Quadriga implementation? Or how this configured the location of users and how you separate the signals from them by maybe some personal sequences I use for separated?
In this investigation, we described only one user, not of all MIMO matrix. In Quadriga channel model, scattering cluster disturbed randomly. And in this work, we just estimate SRS sequence from base station and one our user, user of our base station and some handful user from neighborhood station for interference estimation.
Okay. There's another question?
Konstantin Tafinsov Huawei. So my question is, what is the MIMO configuration for your simulation?
Okay, second. There is just OFDM signal from some subcarriers. You can see that we have some subcarrier index. That means inter-subcarriers, we have some 15 kilogertz. And when we created SRS sequence, we used only some free subcarriers. You can see this displaying on image, on this picture. There is some simple characteristics, but in future work, we can change this characteristic in Quadriga and maybe we get different result.
Other questions? Thank you very much, Alexander, for interesting study.
What sparks innovation? Is it thinking bigger or smaller? Does it strike fast or slow? Is it a flight of fancy or a stroke of genius? Innovation is everywhere, on desktops, in pockets, on wrists, in us. Innovation answers big questions, finds inspiration anywhere. It connects great minds, imagines the impossible and propels us forward. At Keysight, innovation inspires us, fuels us to redefine precision in measurement, to surface insights, to remove barriers. So the next stroke of genius is yours. We are Keysight. We accelerate innovation.
A comparison of the Coplanar Wave Guide to Microstrip Line Transmission Design in the 77 gigahertz frequency range by Victor Tschotkin from Euro Federal University, Jürgenburg.
Thank you very much. Good evening, dear colleagues. As I was introduced, my name is Victor Tschotkin. I'm from Euro Federal University. And my report is about the Coplanar Wave Guide and Microstrip Lines and mostly about the 77 gigahertz frequency range automotive radar. So here is the outline of my presentation. The thing is that currently we're working on the automotive radar, which works in the 77 gigahertz frequency range. And we faced a lot of different design challenges during this work. So I'd like to share some of our research with you today. So first of all, I would like to show you some references. Here you can see that on this figure number one is the reference design from Texas Instruments. It is their demo board for the AWR 1243 chip, which is an MIMO FMCV radar. So on the left, there are RX antennas, on the right, there are TX antennas. And you can see that from the chip, we do have the Coplanar Wave Guide lines with grounding. And the same for the RX antennas and for the TX antennas. Then number two is the reference design from the MXP. And we can see that all of these antennas are fed with ordinary microstrip lines. And the third is the, not the demo board, but it is the Continental ARS for radar, which is used in some cars. And later I will reference to this design. Another reference design is this demo board. And as you can see, the RF part, the RF IC is covered with the electromagnetic interference shield. And this is very important because for automotive radars, there are, well, the regulators' standards, they are rather tight. And we should avoid the ME and avoid the problems that we can face with the electromagnetic capability. Also, on this picture number three, you can see that there is some, there is no cover above the ICs, but there is an ME shielding too. And that was one of the best references for us. Okay, so another one reference, it is from the Texas Instruments, from the data sheet on their demo board. And the part that we were interested in is this part. It is the transition from the Coplanar Wave Guide to the Microstrip Line because commonly all the microchip antennas are fed by the Microstrip Lines. And from the ICs, we do have the Coplanar Wave Guide. Because we wanted to have decoupling, it should be as much as we can achieve for this radar system. Okay, so the very first, our design was, we call it a direct transition design. You can see it over here. The spacing between these two, these two lines which are connected to the antennas on ports one and three is only 1.9 millimeters. So it is half wavelength at the frequency of 79 gigahertz as it is the central frequency of the radar. And on the ports two and four, they are connected to the IC. These are the Coplanar Wave Guides. The width of the line is 0.23 millimeters. And this gap between the line and the ground is 0.1 millimeter. And in the table, you can see all of the parameters. The vice diameter, and it is again very important, is 0.15 millimeters. When we work with such high frequency PCBs, we should stay in touch with the manufacturer because not all of the manufacturers can produce these PCBs. And these dimensions, they are very tight. And on the whole, the design is, well, this design is due to the restrictions of the manufacturer. We got the S parameters of this transition. You can see that they are, well, pretty good. The S21, the transmission coefficient is only minus 0.34 decibel. And the S11, S22 are less than minus 20 dB, which shows us very good result in the return loss of this transmission line. Okay, then. Then we thought that we need an ME shielding for the ICs that we use. And so we completely needed to redesign this part so we can cover all the ICs and leave only the antennas outside the shielding. So we thought about the substrate integrated waveguide transition from the CPV waveguide to the Microstrip Line. Here you can see maybe the easiest part of this work. And this is the design, the reference designs for the transition from the Microstrip Line to the substrate integrated waveguide. So the substrate integrated waveguide here is, consists of the copper on the top of the plate, copper on the bottom of the plate, and some wires which represent the walls of the waveguide. And the transition, the magic thing that we needed to design was this taper. And there are some equations, there are a lot of papers of how this taper could be simulated, how to take the initial design and so on. But the main part was to design the transition from the Coplanar Wave Guide to the substrate integrated waveguide. And this was rather challenging, so we found some references. You can see that under, in this picture number one is one of the references. When we do have the slots that come to the integrated waveguide over here. And the second one is this kind of the transition and it takes less space on the PCB. So we tried to design our own, our own transition in this manner. So here is our transition design. You can see it over here. So here we do have a taper which comes to the Microstrip Line. And here is our transition from the CPV waveguide to the substrate integrative waveguide. So here is the place for the, to soldier the ME shielding over here. But there was, well, a challenge, I will come to it a little bit later. And here are the S parameters of the transition. There is just a little bit wrong graph because the S11 and S22, they should be over here under the minus 15 decibel. So, and the S21, the transmission coefficient is minus 0.5 decibel, which is slightly better than the, than for the direct transition. But we, we worked in touch with the manufacturer, but one time he said us that we can't place the wires so close to each other. That's why we needed to, to increase the space between the wires to 0.45 millimeters. And that's why we didn't have the second row over here between the substrate integrated waveguides. And also the spacing on the whole plate should be bigger. And we thought that we could lose a lot of information and we could decrease the performance of the radar because of the coupling between these two antennas. And so we simulated these designs to get the coupling parameters. You can see them over here on the figure six. The S parameters are for the designs with the wire spacing 0.3 millimeters. And on the right, you can see that the wire spacing is 0.45 millimeters. And as we expected, the S41 coefficient, I will show you. So S41 is the transmission coefficient from the fourth and the first port. We can see that its performance decreased. It is now only minus 28 decibel, while for the design with the, the normal separation of the wires, it was over here, the dashed line, minus 38 decibel. So we lost 11 decibel in the coupling coefficients. All the other coefficients are nearly the same, even for the direct conversion, it doesn't anything to this one. But for this design, the problem was over here in the substrate integrated waveguide because the wave from one waveguide coupled with the exit on the, another waveguide. But these results were okay for us and so we managed this problem. Now we do have radar with antennas that are spaced half wavelength, half wavelength and also the ME screen. And on this slides with the conclusion, you can see a part of our radar. So that was the bottleneck over here. Here are the antennas for the short-range radar and they are separated by only 1.9 millimeters. And so I hope that it works very well. You can see that here is the Microstrip Line, then the taper which comes to the substrate integrated waveguide. And then we do have a transition from the substrate integrated waveguide to the CPV line. Unfortunately, we don't have an opportunity to experimentally, to make the experiment and to see the characterization, the parameters of this transition. Because on one point here is the antenna and here you can see it. There is an IC, so we can't just soldier something to this point and see the parameters of the manufactured radar. But on the whole, it works. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Victor. Do you have questions to Victor? May I ask you a question? This study, I do this study with some industry partner or just, just for fun?
We work within industry partner and they, it is the, one of the governmental projects. And they would produce these radars for the, I don't know how to say, agricultural machines. So like this.
So it is implemented. Thank you. Thank you, Victor, one more time. And our last one speaker, but not last one speech, it will be Kirill Zayde from Euro Federal University, Jürgenburg. And there will be two presentations. Yeah? An effect set related to the radio signal propagation in moving reference frame and another one will be resonant cavity second order perturbation by moving medium with stationary domain.
Thank you very much for introduction. Today, I would like to present you my topics that mostly physics orientated. So my first topic is devoted to, it is mostly general topic in which we trying to create some approach to help to predict some effects that cost while radio signal propagates in moving reference frame. Okay, we consider with well-known effects, but there are still no effective algorithm to deal with these effects. Because these effects are mostly very small effects by order of magnitude. It affects negative for telecommunications, especially in, for example, satellite communication in maybe interplanetary internet or laser satellite communication projects. But this effect's positive in flow detection, structural scoping, in remote sensing, in flow measurement and some other radio monitoring applications. So the main aim of this work is the novel algorithm for these cases. And you can see the stages that we passed in our work. Okay, what is the moving reference frame in our case? We have two reference frame. First reference frame always called the laboratory reference frame. It stationary. And in this reference frame, observer is, observer is in this reference frame. And relatively of this reference frame, we have another moving reference frame where radio signals propagate. As you can understand, this, in this case, we deal with relativistic effects mostly. So we postulates two main boundaries. First boundary, it is the material boundary and is a refractive index of material at rest. So it is very interesting because the refraction index of material at rest depends on the maximum velocity that this body may accelerate to. And the next boundary, it is non-material boundary of the reference frame. So why non-material? Because every body creates two boundary, outer boundary where, where the effects will appear and inner boundary of the body where effects will disappeared. Okay, we create some classification of the effects in moving reference frame. The classification will be matter-free effects. The classification will be matter-free effects. This is effects of radio signal propagation that appeared without any matter, without any material, without any body. So this effect commonly appears in the satellite communication. For example, when the radio signal propagates in vacuum, in the gravitational potential force, the rays of radio signal deflects from natural trajectory. So next group of effects, it is material effects that appears in a material under motion. And in homogeneous effects, it is the effects that appears in the reference frame with some inhomogeneous. Okay, to generalize all these methods, the commonly approach is to create some general A-channel equation. So we solve the A-channel equation in three-dimensional space. Why the dimensional three plus one? Because in the, in our space, we need to deal with time of signal propagation. Because in space propagation, you maybe know, there, there is very long time delay between receiving and transmitting signals. So you can see the general A-channel equation and the very simple application of this equation when we solve the task of signal propagation through the diverging lens, for example. Okay, matter-free effects. Matter-free effects is deflection. Okay, it is the displacement, the trajectory shift due to gravitational force of the reference frame. It is solved with very simple Snell's law with the angle of incident and angle of deflection as well. So and the next relativistic effect, it is frequency shift. When the signal propagates from area with one gravitational potential to the area with another gravitational potential, the frequency of this wave is shift. So, and this shift, we placed in the wave number equation. And then deflection angle and frequency shift wave number, we placed to the general wave number equation that depends on the coordinate of the space. So we deal with curved space. And the wave number depend on the coordinate on this space. So it is very interesting because there is no any matter in this space. It is a vacuum. Okay, material effects. It is effects that appears in the material media while it's motion in the moving reference frame. And these effects were useful for structurescopy and the flow detection of the material. It is very useful in the material science. So it is the electromagnetic drag effect. It is the velocity summation, the phase velocity of the wave and the velocity of the medium itself. Cross polarization, it affects when the propagating wave become more complex in polarization due to the motion of the medium. And dispersion, especially spatial dispersion in the moving medium. So drag effect depends to velocity of the wave in the medium. Cross polarization and dispersion depends on group velocity of the signal in the moving medium. Okay, when we combine matter-free effect with material effect, we become in more complex reference frame. So if in the vacuum, we have some massive body, this massive body create very strange effects. It's called gravita-magnetic effect, gravita-magnetic fields. So the main effect of gravita-magnetic fields is the rotation of polarization angle of the propagating field in this medium. Okay, and we combine all these effect in one A-channel equation. This is the total wave number of the propagation wave depend on coordinate and time in the system. You can see the frequency shift, the deflection angle, the material index of refraction, the Fresnel drag effect. And these all effects combined in one equation. And this equation depends on A-channel. So it depends on curves of the space of wave propagation. So this is maybe very simple example. We divided all the system into four region. So first region, it is the region where the space are not curved. And this region, we deal only with matter-free effects. In the second region, it is the region in the outer non-material boundary of the massive body where we deal with non-material and material effects. Next region, it is the region where we deal with general A-channel equation. And the next region where we deal only with material effects. And the main aim of our work is algorithm of deal of all these effects. Firstly, we calculate the matter-free effects in region one by the wave number depend on coordinate. Next, we implement this wave number to the medium effects and check the, our first boundary of material medium. We obtain the total index of refraction of this moving video medium that depends on frequency, coordinate, and time. And then we implement this in inhomogeneous effects checked with non-material boundaries. And then we obtain our general effect set. Okay, this is the conclusion of my speech. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Kirill. The first part of your speech. Do you have some questions to Kirill? Sure.
Hello, my name is, I'm also Kirill. As I understood, the topic is about wave propagation in, in the space, sorry, about wave propagation and the general relativity.
And due to quantum mechanics holes.
Yes.
So when we speak about moving medium or moving reference frame, we deal with very small effects, very small effects in order of magnitude. But nowadays, we need to research these effects because in satellite communication, we need very accurate radio channel of information transmitting. So the relativistic effects, we need to take into account. And in material science, nowadays, we need to take into account also the quantum effects. So, and this is some kind of combination of relativistic effects and quantum effects. Because all these effects appears in moving reference frame.
And the question is, how can it be applied? It's accept the observation of the spinning black holes or something else?
Okay, it is a very good question. And my second report devoted to the possible practical application of this study.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? We can go to your next report. Let's continue.
Okay, this report, as I said, devoted the possible practical application of moving medium effects of radio signal propagation. Right, it is a very urgent topic in material science, especially in bionisotropic material, Kirill material, and maybe metamaterial science. So let's start. Maybe you know the methods of material investigation in the case of electrodynamic parameters like permittivity or permeability of the material. There are a lot of methods and approach to investigate the material parameters of the medium. And one of among them, one of approach is the cavity perturbation method. So this approach consists of the analysis of the resonator parameters without perturbation and with this perturbation. While we compare these resonator parameters, we can make the conclusions about material that we placed in this cavity resonator. So in our work, we consider the rectangular waveguide operates at X-band 8 till 12 gigahertz. For us, moving medium will be the distilled water in the dielectric pipe. Okay, and this moving medium move without any modulation, without any changes in the domain, in its domain. So this consideration is very useful for the development of novel methods of flow measurements, of non-contact flow measurements by radio methods. So as you know, there are numbers of flow measurements approaches. But non-contact is maybe only acoustic flow measurements and maybe induction flow measurements. So that is why our aim is the detection of the motion of the medium and determine the velocity of its motion. This is the geometry of our problem. We have the waveguide cavity. This is the short end, this is the coupling, this is the exactation of the resonator. This cavity ensures the standing waves creation. So the normalized amplitudes of standing waves in the cavity shown in the slide. Here we have the perturbation of this cavity. It is the cylinder where the medium will move. Okay, next, we move to the perturbation analysis. So the zero order perturbation, it is absence of any perturbation. There is no perturbation in the cavity. So it is the ideal state of our waveguide. First order perturbation, it is perturbation when we placed in the cavity some dielectric object. So this dielectric object will be the cylinder with water. But water at rest, there is no motion of water. So in the free space, if we consider the free space, the motion of the object is the first order of perturbation. That is why in our case, the medium start to move. It equal to the second order of the perturbation of the cavity. So this is the task that we want to solve and experimentally verify. Okay, what we mean when we speak about stationary perturbation domain? So the omega is a three-dimensional space and this three-dimensional space is the cavity volume. Okay, the boundary of the cavity and dp is the boundary of the perturbation that belongs to omega. Okay, and the measure of the perturbation is always the constant value. So the area of perturbation never change while the motion. And we consider only two possible cases of such emotion. First motion, it is the axial movement of the medium in the pipe. And the cross-sectional area of the pipe is always constant. And the second case, it is the rotation of the pipe. So when we rotate the pipe where the water placed, the area of cross-section of this pipe is always constant. But the medium become to move due to centrifugal force of the rotation. So it's two case that we consider in our task. Okay, next, we deal with the resonator egg in modes. When we place the cylinder in the resonator, we can operate with two types of modes. First mode, when the cylinder in the minimum of the standing wave in the waveguide. And the second case, when the cylinder in the maximum of the standing, standing wave. At the simulation, console simulation show us the case when the cylinder in the minimum of the standing wave is the most sensitive to the second order perturbation. The reason of this not very clear for us and are still under discussion. So the moving medium characterization. When the isotropic medium becomes to move, it becomes the bionisotropic medium and creates the effects that I told you in my previous report. It is the medium material effect such electromagnetic drag, cross polarization, and dispersion, spatial dispersion. All these effects, we consider in the refractive index of the moving medium. And in this equation, gamma, it is the propagation constant in the moving medium. And in this equation, gamma, it is the propagation constant in the moving medium, medium and in this propagation constant. As you can see, we consider the linear velocity of the medium beta. Beta, it is the dimensionless speed of the medium, right? In this slide, I like to show you the zero order perturbation parameters for the resonator. It's well, no parameters, it is a Q factor, it is the resonant frequency and Q factor for loaded resonator. Yes, first order perturbation, when we place the cylinder in the resonator, this is the new resonant frequency, it shift downward relatively to resonant frequency without perturbation and it's a new S11 parameter. And from this S11 parameter, we can easily obtain the new quality factor of our resonator. And all these measurements were on this Ekin mode of resonator, okay? And the second order perturbation, when the medium becomes to move, this is the new resonant frequency of the resonator and this is our new quality factor of the resonator. It's only the mathematical formulas, as you see. And on this slide, you can see the effect magnitude of the, this system. This is our function that depends on linear velocity of the medium. It is proportion of frequency of second order perturbation and frequency of the first order perturbation. This is not a power, it is the indexes. And this is the dependence of this order of magnitude and linear velocity of the medium. At the moment of this presentation, we trying to set up the experiment and I think the experiment will be approved our mathematical apparatus. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Kirill. Other any questions to Kirill? Sure.
Viktor Chotkin, I've got a question about the, the first order model. Do you take into account the material of the pipe and that in the center of the pipe there is, for example, air, but, no, the next slide, but there are some, well, some walls of this pipe. How do you take this into account?
Okay, it is a very good question because when we implemented the cavity perturbation approach to the measurement of material parameters, we always deal with effective permittivity and effective permeability. So it is the integrated function. We cannot indicate some inhomogeneities in this body. So we integrate this body. That is why we always deal with effective value of the epsilon and mu. That is why there, there are no chance to implement multi-layered structures.
Thank you. Other any question? If we have no question, I want to congratulate all of us that we have completed the first day of our conference. Thank you, Kirill. And not just congratulation, I want to give you some papers, some certificates. Konstantin Tafinsov, you're certified by this conference. Thank you very much. Kirill Kolopaev. Thank you. Mikhail Kamenev. Thank you. Denis Samcov. Daria Lipchak. Ruslan Ahpashov. Ilya Daшинsky. Alexander Stenin. Viktor Chichotkin. Kirill Zayda. And once again, and just last one step, we have to make a common photo as its background. So come here, all participants, we will take a photo and you will be free for today. We'll go to dinner.
5G is coming for a super connected world. The car industry is one of the first verticals to take advantage of cutting-edge 5G solution for improving road safety. Huawei is spending significant efforts to bring 5G into the car industry. In June 2017, China Mobile, Saica Motor and Huawei have jointly conducted the first field trial in China for teleoperated driving. The tests took place in Shanghai. Powered by 5G, ultra-high bandwidth and ultra-low latency, a person sitting miles away from the car can remotely and easily drive the car as precisely as he would be in the driving seat. With 50 meg per second uplink throughput, the multi-HD video data coming from the car can be transmitted to the driver immediately, while the control signals from the remote driver can also be transmitted back to the car under 10 milliseconds. The driver seems sitting in the car to drive it like people do today. Applications for teleoperated driving could be applied to dangerous environments like mining and construction fields. There are other scenarios where teleoperated can play a major role, such as car rental and car sharing projects. In June 2017, Huawei has also conducted platooning trial in Germany and in China. With 5G ultra-low latency, the control signals can be transmitted from the pilot car to the following cars within five milliseconds. It allows the platooning fleet to manage all events such as the close tracking, the lane change and the emergency brake easily, thanks to the precise synchronization among all vehicles forming the platooning fleet. Such a scenario will improve the road safety, save labor cost and lower the fuel consumption by shortening the distance between platooning vehicles. Recently, in Beijing and Shanghai field trials, Huawei has completed a series of 5G new radio tests. The downlink peak throughput has reached over six gigabytes per second for a single user. The cell peak rate has exceeded 18 gigabytes per second. Moreover, these field trials have demonstrated that the 5G NR air interface latency is well below 0.5 milliseconds and the total cell capacity can support over 4 million single-cell connections. Let's move forward to a more connected and intelligent world enabled by 5G.